The planning and zoning meeting is now called to order. It's six o'clock. And first order of business is a roll call. Commissioners, please say aye, give your name.
Dan Rutke.
Rachel Weaver.
Cindy Greengold.
Larry Brown.
Laura Blackwelder.
Kathleen Brolle. And absent tonight is Kelly Hahn. So our first order of business is the approval of the January 24th, 2024 Planning Commission Agenda. Pardon me, right before I start, go to the second agenda item. I just want to say that I have a quote here by Booker T. Washington that says, "Those who are happiest are those who do the most for others." So I just want to say thank you to all of the commissioners for the work that you do. I know you're just present here right now, but I know there's a lot of work, reading, effort, research that goes on behind the scenes before we come. So I want to thank you as well as our commission clerk, Karen Humm, and our town planner, Sarah. And as soon as I said your name, Sarah, your last name went right out of my head. Franklin. Frank. So, thank you. And now, on to the second agenda item, which is the approval of the January 24th, 2024 Planning Commission Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Yes, Commissioner. Did you say you approved?
I thought move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstaining.
The next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the December 13th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Do I have a motion for approval? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Chair, I have a clarification question. Several places in the Planning Commission Meeting, it talks about the cost of reforestation, and it's just a number, a dollar number, not per square foot, not per whatever. Does that need to be altered, or does everybody understand that's what it is?
Do I have a motion to look at this?
Under five old business.
Mm-hmm.
It talks about estimation of actual costs will be esti-- which was estimated at $4.05. Next page, motion under, still under five old business, the same thing. That it says $4.05.
Actually, those-- Twenty-five.
Okay, well, then it's wrong under fees and lieu. Plus, it doesn't have what it's per square foot, per linear yard, per whatever. So the 405 is wrong, and then, in my mind, it needs to have per square foot. And then on the second page, the motion that you made to have Sarah draft language to include the minimum cost of plantings, it also doesn't say per square foot or per whatever. It would be clear to the public, I think, if it was changed.
All right, do we have a second on that? Motion to discuss?
A motion to amend or discuss?
Well, I think we have to discuss. So I guess motion to amend, and then we will leave, open with the discussion.
I'll second it.
All right. So, just for clarification. Sarah, I just want to touch base with you. There is the difference, as Commissioner Rutke mentioned, on the old business of fee and lieu. And then, on the motion, it says 425. So can you, so can you enlighten us a little bit what would be the actual correct way to refer to this?
So, the 405 is referring to like a reforestation cost, and then the 425 incorporated administrative costs. So both numbers are correct, they're just referring to different--
But they need to be--
Pieces.
But they are per square foot.
Per square foot, yes.
So the 425 includes the 405 plus an administrative fee?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comment? Then I, so, I guess what we're going to do is add the language, make a motion to add the, amend, so that we have square foot on the second motion. Is that correct?
And the first.
Both would have, both could have square foot. They're both referring to square feet.
So both of them are, have the omission of the square?
Yes.
Feet, okay.
We probably omitted it while we were talking. Because we knew what we were talking about.
The Chairman, Commissioner Rutke, do you want to make a motion for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Regarding the minutes of the Planning Commission Meeting, December 13th, there are two references to the cost of reforestation. One, under old business fees in lieu, where it says, it's the, next to the last sentence, it says, "She also provided an estimate, estimation of actual costs, which would be estimated at $4.05," which should be, should say $4.05 per square foot. And also, under five, the second motion, first sentence, Chair Brolle moved to direct the planner to draft language to include the minimum cost for mitigation of plantings to be 425. And again, it should say per square foot. I think if the public read it, they'd find it more clear.
Commission Clerk, do you, do you have that amend?
And I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
So there are any other amendments to the minutes before approval? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
I'm abstaining.
And one abstain, abstination?
Abstention.
Abstention? All right. Now we're moving on to item four. So item four says meeting dates. And I noticed in the review of the upcoming year, we need to make three changes, if you would look at your calendar, for our meeting. The first one would be, it's scheduled, our meeting in February next month is scheduled on February 28th. That's a, there's a conflict with staff administration. So we're gonna, we need to move the, our planning and zoning meeting from February 28th. Now, other available dates are February 21st, which I believe is the preceding Wednesday. And then, there's also the following Monday, which is February 26th, or Tuesday, February the 27th. So, if you want a moment to look at your calendar, please let me know what would be available first with the February 28th meeting. What would be a good alternative date for you?
I have no preference, I can make any of the other days.
Thank you. Commissioner Weaver? Okay?
Me too.
Okay? Okay?
I'm happy with the 21st.
And so the 21st is the preceding Wednesday, all right? Well, what about you, Sarah?
I'm available on the 21st.
Excellent. Commission Clerk?
Good with me.
All right.
So, then if there's no opposition, then we will move the February 28th meeting to the February 21st date at 6:00 PM. Next, I'd like you to look at the November schedule. The November schedule has us meeting on November 27th, which, I thought the 28th is Thanksgiving.
It is.
So I doubt that that would be as convenient for us to meet on the 27th. There's turkeys to prepare, find, hunt down. So if you, if everybody is available, then I'd like to move November 27th to November 20th.
Fine with me.
Okay. And you as well?
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. Commission Clerk, yes? Okay, and Town Planner?
Yes.
All right. All right, then, that meeting in November will be November 20th, and not November 27th. Thank you. And then the last change is in December. I see our meeting is scheduled for Christmas. I know how festive--
I'm not coming.
Well, it can be pretty festive here, no doubt about it. But I don't think that you want to come, have our meeting on December 25th. So I, again, I recommend that if we move it one week proceeding to December 18th, if everybody's schedule allows.
Fine, may I be?
Commission Clerk? Town Planner?
That works.
All right, so--
That's easy.
Then, we will move the December meeting to the 18th. So, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any meeting dates they'd like to discuss, or?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The only question is, are we going to, are we going to be keeping a meeting time, six to eight, or what is our time, what are our times going to be? Because I know when we switch the time, it was to accommodate, so that staff can get home early. I just want to make sure that's six to eight.
Well, I, I think in, historically, as Commissioner, former Chair Brown used to do it, at, after two hours, he would look at the clock, and then we would go around. So I think, great precedent, and we would do that. We'll, at eight o'clock, we will evaluate, should we continue, or, or not? So. Yes, thank you. And no other discussion on meeting dates? Okay, then we are going to move? Let's see, the next item is, we have a public, I don't see, obviously, anybody present, so nobody has public comment physically present to offer any. But I do, I'd like to read into the record a, a written comment that we received via email. And this was received on Wednesday, January 24th, at 10:35 this morning. And it is from Wesley Donovan. And it is addressed to the commission clerk. And he respectfully asks, well, he asks, "Can you submit my question to the planning and zoning?" So, I will now read his request into the record. Hello, on page 14 of the town planner's memo, comma, paren six, has been struck. Why would the commission not want to use material from the spoil site that has been dried and cured to combat any coastal resiliency? Material from the spoil site would be perfectly fine to use to build a berm, as an example. If you recall, berms are one of the measures that the Coastal Resiliency Plan calls for engineers to consider. This recommendation doesn't make any sense to me, and I hope that the commission has a conversation about keeping this line item tonight. Secondly, with regards to giving the CBCAC the power to approve or deny anything in the town, seems like that would be giving up control of the Planning and Zoning Commission that you sit on, and from the zoning administrator. The town zoning administrator has the first review, at which time, they look at the application, and they ensure that all of the critical area laws are being adhered to. Tripling the fees in lieu of planting seems excessive. I understand and can appreciate the reasoning for raising it, but tripling it in one year seems out of line. Since the commission is going to be reviewing this on an annual basis, can the commission be more reasonable with the proposed increases? By the way, for what it's worth, $1.25 is too low. It should be increased, just be reasonable. There is no further public comment written or in person. So now we shall proceed to item number six, which is old business. Number one--
Can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
This memorandum, the staff report from Monapolis--
That was from me.
That was from you.
That's from later.
That's from later. Okay, thank you. I was wondering if it was a public comment.
No.
So the next item, number six, old business, and the first one is rules of procedure. And, let's see. So does-- I will start with you, Commissioner Rutke.
Regarding the rules of procedure?
Yes, do you have any comments?
No, I did not. I read through it all a couple of times, and I didn't have any comment.
No comment. Vice Chair Greengold?
Yes, thank you. There are a couple of things I would like to actually add or discuss with everybody to see if they would like to add it as well. Under Section 2A Membership, I would like to add, where it reads, "The majority of whom are residents," I would like to add full-time residents of Chesapeake Beach as a qualification to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I mean, I know that's already residents, but I just want to clarify. And I think it should be full-time, because we have a lot of, you know, vacationers that come. And I just think that you need to really be on-site over a period of time to understand what really needs to-- Am I the wrong one?
I'm just making, I'm trying to follow where you are.
Oh, okay, it's at Section 2, organization, so I'm right down here.
Okay, and you're--
So where it says, on the second sentence, it says, "The Planning Commission shall consist of seven members, the majority of whom are residents." And I just wanted to, you know, clarify that and say, full-time residents of Chesapeake Beach. Because right now, you could be, you know, North Beach, I mean, it could be any resident. It should be a little bit more detailed, I think. So I would like to move that we change the, the section where it reads residents and include full-time residents of Chesapeake Beach.
Do we, is there any other discussion on that?
I'd just be curious to know if there's a way to define full-time.
There is a legal way, because you do it in taxes, you do it where it's--
Residents, I think, is--
Or you can have primary-- Actually, could I amend that and say pri-- Yes, that's exactly right. You'd have to say primary resident, a primary-- You would have to be a resident, let me see, how would you rephrase that, then? So it's not-- So the majority of whom are--
Primary residents.
Who indicate Chesapeake Beach as a primary residence, is that, would that be clearer? Full-time is usually six months and--
Whose primary residence is in the town of Chesapeake Beach?
Say that again, please.
Whose primary residence is in the town of Chesapeake Beach?
There you go, let's, let's go ahead and rephrase it to, "Majority of whom are"-- No. Whose--
Whose primary--
Primary residence is the town of Chesapeake Beach. Primary residence is the town of Chesapeake Beach. Do you change the amendment?
Yeah, I think that's, that's better, because full-time, then you get into the infinitives of what's-- Is, okay.
And that would be that one. Do you want to do a vote on that motion?
We have a second, if that's correct.
Yeah, I second you, it is, already.
Any, so are we ready to vote on that? Any further discussion on that?
Item?
Commissioner Brown have a comment?
Full-time? It says exactly what you just, I looked that up, too, and it says exactly what it says right here. It's exactly, so you would have to change the code entirely to read what we just said. Because in the code, it says, "Of whom are residents appointed by the mayor, blah, blah." So this is exactly taken out of the code. Well, isn't this going to be codified? This is, the whole thing is going to be a new code, right, part of the code? Oh?
These are our rules and procedures.
Also, they're not going to go into the, the code under commissioners? Any commission? Well--
It'll go under Planning Commission, but--
Okay.
Larry's saying elsewhere within the code--
The code says--
It doesn't say the same thing, is that what you're, the code says the same?
The code says this.
Right.
Whom are residents.
Right, so if we, if we vote for a change, your question is, should it be changed elsewhere? Or should they be--
He's asking, are you intending that it would then be changed in the code?
I thought this was going to be codified. I thought this was going to go into our code, which, you know, okay, I now understand, this is not. So what is this?
Our rules and procedures. It just would be the body for the planning and zoning rules and procedures.
Okay, so you're not going to put it into the, you know, because we have a whole section under the code regarding planning and zoning. So I thought you were going to include that in that, but you're not. I'd indicate, okay, well--
You can't do that without doing it through an ordinance.
I'm sorry?
You can't do that without doing it through an ordinance.
Right, exactly, right, I see that now, okay. Well, then I can rescind that motion, because at this point, then, it really doesn't matter if we're not going to codify it, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. I will rescind that motion.
It's not, however.
May I ask a question?
Well, I mean, you really need to have, I mean, Commissioner Brown is always one to clarify things. And I thought, well, you know, he'd enjoy this one.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
May I ask a question, just because I am, I'm keeping notes of recommended changes to Section 290. So would you like me to put this as a note for consideration when you're looking at changes to the zoning ordinance? Just keep it in my file of notes.
I would appreciate it, I think it should be in there.
Well--
Oh, since, we never voted on it, but it was--
You--
It's a motion, but we wouldn't have, we can agree on it.
When you guys talk about something, is everyone okay with me to just stick it in my notes for later discussion? I just want to make sure I'm not stepping over any lines doing that.
Like your Amazon list of things I'd like--
Kind of.
Your wish list.
Is the Amazon list of things that are kind of coming up, that are maybe something that needs to be addressed. And so I'm hearing one here. If it's okay with everyone, I will--
Let's, let's vote on that? All in favor with it being, well, I guess we have two, two ideas, that you keep a, a list of--
I'm keeping a list to share with you, but I want to make sure you're, it's okay to put your ideas in it.
So, does anybody have a concern with the town planners keeping a list, A? And then B, would, do we want this added to the list for maybe future consideration?
Just a question, it feels like she could have a list.
She absolutely cannot have a list.
She's only trying to be polite, she was going to do it anyway.
Have a list anyway, I just don't want to block your suggestions. Too, I think this-- I don't want to put your suggestions in it unless, because a lot of times, you vote on that suggestion, right? So if one person has a suggestion, I stick it in the list, I don't want to cause a problem later. So that's the question I'm asking.
Well, it's, it's been made clear to me that you have a list anyway. What, what I say, even though I have the mallet. And so B, do we want this added to the list? Is, I guess, the other--
Yes, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm a, I'm a yea.
Okay, do I sell the floor, then, Madam Chair?
You do, Vice Chair.
This is, you know, I abstain from the, the agenda just because I wasn't quite exactly sure why this was on the agenda again, because I thought you'd already gone through this, so I didn't understand it was not going to be codified. But anyway, the, so when you go to Section 3, under Applications, even though it's already in the code under Article, under Article 6, Site Plan 29023, we still want to have that as one of the-- What is one of the, why, why do we have it in here? I mean, it's only one of the procedures that we do, but yet we have it in here. So I'm trying to understand why it's in here.
Section 3?
Section 3, Applications, this is about site plans, correct? So I'm thinking, you don't really have all of the-- I, I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing on this rules of procedure. Are we putting in all the things that we do, like, we, you know, put together the comprehensive plan, we, you know, blah, 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 all these different things? But you don't have all that in here, you just have site plan applications. So I'm a little confused as to what this agenda item is, actually. I would, I would take this out, just because we already have it, that is codified, it is in our code. And it, it's not exactly verbatim, so you're almost kind of confusing issues by having it here and not having it word for word from the code. So I just was going to suggest you delete it, but again, I, since I wasn't here la-- Even though I, I watched the, I watched the movie from last, from your last meeting, I don't remember anything that you said about Section 3. Comments, I guess?
I would disagree with deleting it. The code says we can make our own rules and procedures. We came up with a procedure that's, adds clarity to what an application filing constitutes. That's something that we need. And I think it's appropriate for it to be here.
But is it exactly what's in the code?
It is not, it elaborates on what is in the code. It doesn't conflict with what's on the code. We can have Larry go over his legal opinion of it again.
Sound a little confusing, but okay. Okay, then, the next thing--
Well, excuse me, before you go on, I, I don't know if anybody else has a comment on the Section 3, but I do, I, I see, and I agree with Commissioner Blackwelder that I think that, no, this doesn't replace, but I think it, it supplements and augments what kind of, in, in some instances, clarifies and makes our rules and procedures more obvious. But it says all applications, and, and my thought was, do we want all applications? Or are there other kinds of applications than site plans? And I, I didn't know if we should be more specific with saying, instead of all applications, all site plans, because I was trying to think of, would there be other applications that we would review other than a site plan? So.
I think it's fine, I think we're splitting hairs here. If we don't know what we're trying to address, we probably shouldn't address it.
Right. But if we, if we only review, if only site plans are what the planning and zoning reviews, why would we say all applications? Because I think that's confusing.
Well, what, okay, so--
So that's what my question is.
A site plan comes in on an application. I guess other things might come in on an application, and it says, "All applications shall be filed on forms approved by the Planning Commission." So, to me, what that's saying-- So, to me, what that's saying is, we have forms that we require somebody to file something on, they can't just dump whatever they want to do in our lap in any way that they want. And they should be accompanied by the filing fee. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what we're trying to address by adding language.
Well, actually, I'm saying remove language, I'm saying remove applications, and if we, if the planning and zoning commission only reviews site plans, then why do we have applications? But perhaps the town planner can elucidate this for us.
So, I think.
What else might we do, other than site, what else might be submitted to us, other than site plans or consideration? I think that's.
So, and I'm not, I'm not sure if this is in a different location, but remember you're talking about having requests for, oh, advisory, this is a second, this is a separate section. Remember you're talking about advisory opinions? You were, like, people requesting opinions, that's, was my initial thought. But mainly, yes, you review category 1 site plans. I'm double checking, but I don't think, there might be like modifications to the site plans. I don't know if that would constitute a different application, but remember that these were, the, like, model was the Board of Appeals model. So it could just be kind of holdover language. But I don't, yeah. Landscaping subdivision plaits. You could go either way.
Okay, the next thing I was going to say is, the other confusing part for me was on Section 6, the quorum.
Wait, maybe, before you move on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we want to vote, then, that we would remove applications and put site plan? Or do we, or do we just want to keep it all applications?
I have a question. If, if somebody is in a position of asking us to pay instead of.
Of fees and lieu?
Right, 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 right. Is that considered to be within their application? Or is that a separate thingy?
Yeah, you bring up a, a good point, that current versus future regulations, like the regulations we're drafting could, could potentially trigger. It's probably still a site plan, but maybe leave it application because it, right, if you go into the fee and lieu program, you could have a site plan, and then that's a piece of the site plan.
Right.
But slightly separate. And then there's a few more kind of things from the comments that Critical Area gave that may tie into that, so that's a good point.
I think it ought to be left at applications myself. For any request that comes to us in a legal capacity, I guess they'll all be somewhat under the auspices of a site plan, but it's a separate issue, it seems to me, so.
I understand, I will rescind my site plan.
Okay, then. The, the next question I, I have is on Section 6 quorum, and it indicates four commissioners. And that's if you have, of course, a total of seven commissioners, but half my time here has been, you know, with, with fewer than seven, and I'm just trying to suggest that maybe we want to have a different wording for what constitutes a quorum. Is that splitting hairs again? I mean, is it a big deal? But I was going to just say, a majority of the commissioners present shall constitute, constitute a quorum, because, you know, but I, I guess that's just splitting hairs again.
Well, I do think it's relevant if four commissioners are a quorum, and there's, I mean, that's based on a full commission of seven members. So.
But if there were just three people here, would you want, would you want to do anything smaller anyway? Even if you had a smaller group, that feels like just three people is sort of a small number to be making decisions.
Okay, I guess what I was referring to is if you only have six commissioners, you know, seated at any time, you know, like, which is what I had for years, you're only six. So then you don't have four commissioners being a quorum, you would have four, you would have, let's see if you had six commissioners, you'd have, you'd still have four, wouldn't you?
Right.
Right. So if you had five, so if one was absent, let's say if you had five commissioners, if one was absent, then what would be a quorum? Three. But you could still have three.
If total of five.
If you have a total of five people there. So I'm just asking, is that something that we want to address here, or no?
I do not. I think even if you have a smaller commission, but if, you want four people to be required for any meeting, regardless of the size of the commission at the time.
Well, again, you're going to have to change the code, because the code says
Yeah.
that four
We'd have to want her bucket list.
of the commission shall constitute a quorum.
Right, it would have to go on her list.
Her list. With regard to quorums, it's however, your board is however many members are appointed and sworn in. And the quorum is partly how many you can have to have a meeting, but partly how many of you can't stand out in the parking lot and discuss planning and zoning together and be making a decision, right? Per the Open Meetings Act. So even if five of you showed up here, a quorum is still four. And that's how many you need to start a meeting. But just because there's only five of you here doesn't mean that four of you would be able to have a discussion outside of the meeting about a topic that should be discussed in public. So that's, that's really what the quorum is related to, is that Open Meetings Act from the state of Maryland.
If only three people showed up, would we have a meeting?
No.
It's insufficient. So it's got to be four.
You don't have a quorum.
Okay, all right, all right.
But, but, I don't know, I kind of like adding four commissioners present at a meeting shall constitute a quorum with the seven, because then I think it has a point of reference, because then everybody can do the math for, if there's not seven, which would be the full commission.
Right. You, you would have to have the, you would have to only have five members who are appointed and sworn in to have a quorum smaller than four. So if, if there were only five of you, total sworn in, appointed and sworn in, then your quorum would be three. But if you have six or seven appointed and sworn in members of the planning commission, your quorum will be four. So since your, your commission is required to have seven members, generally, you have seven members appointed, or sometimes you have a vacant seat, it sounds like. So if, if the, the towns board, right, decided to change the number of planning commissioners, then that would affect the quorum. But I think while you have a seven-member board that is supposed to be in place, obviously things happen, and so sometimes you have a vacancy, but that, that's kind of why it's written how it is.
I agree with Rachel that for a site plan review, four is a very small number. If four people can't agree on passing a site plan, then maybe it shouldn't be passed.
And the bigger point, I think, that Larry had made too, like, this discussion seems like we're trying to affect code, and then that, that wasn't really on the agenda, like, versus our planning and zoning procedures. Is that, are those separate, would those be potentially separate things that we would want to bring up if we were going to? But just because we change it on here, doesn't.
Right, it would be go on her bucket list, yeah, it would go on her list.
Well, partly it doesn't change it in the code, and partly because you have to comply with Maryland Open Meetings Act, it might not be easily changed.
Right. Because the quorum, as you said, is based, to have a quorum is in compliance with the Open Meeting Act.
Right. So the public has a right to witness the deliberations of its elected and appointed bodies. And that's why partly the quorum exists to make sure you have enough people to make a decision, and partly it exists to make sure that, you know, you know when you're starting to deliberate, you know, that the public has a right to listen to you. So that's where that's going to get sticky, if you try to, you could, you could say a majority of the members of the board, which is equal to four, right? But it, it's just kind of saying the same thing in a different way.
Okay. There was only one other thing I was going to ask. When it came to citizens' participation on number, Section, Section 11, I guess it is. Yeah. I'm, I'm going to forget that one, because I thought I saw in here that they were only going to allow one speaker per organization. But I don't see it.
I saw that, too.
But I thought, it's not here and I don't see it. But anyway, I was going to suggest that we, it doesn't matter. Okay, we'll leave that one, because I don't see it right, wait a minute, hold on.
Members of the planning commission may address questions. Each speaker, speaker, gentleman, call the name.
Somewhere, I read that.
A person, she's named.
Because a lot of times, you'll need two people, you'll need a, the, the applicant and then their consultant, sometimes you'll need two people sometimes. I can't remember, and of course, it's at the discretion of the chair as well, so I just want to make sure that that was justified. But this is just our own little directive, so I, I really think it's fine the way it is. Oh, thank you, I'm, I've concluded my comments.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Blackwelder?
I'll just thank Larry for putting these together, our improvement, and recognizes some problems that we had in the commission with site plan review earlier.
The only other comment I would like to make is in Section 14, in the, I guess it's the third sentence, that there has been the change from minutes shall be kept by the clerk, and it was, we removed the word secretary, because the commission clerk's correct title is commission clerk, it's not secretary. And it previously reflected secretary, and it's the same in Section 15. Again, that's in the first sentence, the planning commission shall submit a written request to the clerk, and that's the commission clerk, so. Which would also change from secretary. That is, there's no further discussion. Then we shall vote to adopt. All in favor? Aren't we going to agree to accept this?
I think they already adopted it.
Whole thing, or just your reference to clerk as opposed to?
I think you already adopted it last meeting, that's why I was a little confused on the agenda, but I think you already adopted this last meeting, didn't you?
Okay.
That's, all right, that's why I was a little confused there, but okay, there you go, all right.
Well, that was easy. And now we will go to the item number two, review of the state's critical area comments. And everybody has received the memo from the town planner, is that, is that correct? No?
I received it by email, but I don't have it here.
Oh, okay.
All I got.
I have one that I'd be happy to give you, but mine's mocked up. So has everyone had a chance to read the memo from the town planner? So, then we will begin with Commissioner Rutke. The comment. Critical Area Commission staff report?
Yeah, no, don't worry, it's.
From 2020?
No, I think she wants me to summarize my memo.
Go over your memo.
Oh. Okay. Well, I thought the memo summarized that, but certainly.
I, I can, I can kind of go over it, so I, I, it was requested that I meet in person with the Critical Area Commission to discuss some of the comments. And I think the, one of the biggest reasons why they wanted to meet is they wanted to talk about the 200-foot buffer. And so in trying to understand the 200-foot buffer, the understanding, right, is that we want to make sure that, the town wants to make sure that folks who are in these areas close to waterways that are more sensitive and more subject to floodplain and sea level rise issues are mitigating in a way that helps resiliency. And so the commission was concerned that the 200-foot buffer is actually, could create like a lot of variances and an enforcement problem. And they said, given what your concern is, right, maybe instead of having a 200-foot buffer, you create a coastal resiliency overlay and create a more, a higher level of mitigation in the coastal resiliency overlay, tie that to your sea level rise maps that you have from the coastal resiliency plan. And this way, you're more, you're more directly addressing the issue, and you're addressing the issues in the area that will be impacting, rather than just expanding the buffer. So you have the buffer and it has its regulations, and then you create an overlay with its own set of regulations that will ultimately make those zones more resilient. So you might have higher planting, you might have, they also recommended maybe a robust fee and lieu program that, you know, say you have a street, and everyone on that street is, is putting money when they do a improvement into this one pot. And then that pot is actually addressing a, as we talked about in the last meeting, a structural stormwater, or even a living coastline project that's more expensive than one person can do, maybe not right next to that street, but a little further down, it's still helping the folks on that street. So that's kind of the conversation we had, and I think that's why they wanted to meet in person. They had a couple of items that they said, you know, you remove this, but statutorily it needs to be in there. There was one item that we were asked to remove, that they said, if you leave this in here, you are going to have trouble getting it through the commission. It's item on page 14. So that, that was generally the discussion, and so that kind of changes our discussion, but I thought you, based on our interactions, I thought you would like that idea and want to consider it, so. Does that sum up?
Yes, you had three different, I'm sorry.
Oh, three different options for what you can do, right? So, so we can, you guys can say, that's nice, we're just going to keep it the way it is and put it, and we're not going to take this advice. In there, that's fine, and just move forward. You can say, okay, we're, go, we hear what you say, we want to do the coastal resiliency overlay, but we're concerned that we would like these regulations to take place sooner, right? We don't want to wait for these regulations to take place. So, so that we can get this through a little easier, we'll do with the 100-foot buffer, we'll submit it to you, and we will immediately start an amendment. We'll submit it to you and we will immediately start an amendment process, which you're allowed to amend it four times. So that way you have stricter regulations in place right away and then you're moving on to the coastal resiliency. And then you can hold the whole thing back, right? And wait and do the coastal resiliency overlay and put it all forward at the same time. There's probably a fourth option I didn't think of, there usually is.
So just for clarification, Sarah, on your memo, under number one, A, B, and C, well, I guess A, B, and C represent the three options that you.
Right.
That you just presented.
Yes.
Okay. Anything further from your, your meeting?
We want to, there's more, kind of staff wants to talk a little more about the violations section as well. Especially once we decide, like you all decide, are we doing coastal resiliency overlay or not? And so I will be meeting with them in the next few weeks based on the conversation we have here to get more comments either way.
Before we continue and open this for discussion, whatever option, like for example, if we went with option number, the B, the second one, which would be the ordinance with a 100-foot buffer and then immediately started amendment. All of whatever we decide, is there a specific timeline that they're looking at? I mean, obviously, they want to see our response.
Oh, right, they're waiting for, yes, so that was what, when I spoke with them, I said, do you want us to adopt something now and then start the buffer or, you know, are you willing to wait? So if, if you decide to do this coastal resiliency overlay, is it a delay that we would support? So there wouldn't be an issue with the commission. So staff would tell the commission why we're delaying. Everyone would be happy with that choice and so it wouldn't be an issue of we need this, we need this.
Okay. So we're not under, there was a timeline specifically when we submitted.
We do need to submit it, right? But if we're making this improvement and working with staff in good faith, then they're not concerned about the delay.
May I ask a few questions?
Standby Commissioner Blackwelder. So Vice Chair, do you have?
Oh, I was going to just ask some questions too, so if you wanted to start with.
So, all right, then let's go around the room. That's okay? We can, we can start with Commissioner Blackwelder if you want.
I don't have to start. I just wanted, before we went on commissioner comments, I wanted to see if we could ask questions. But I can start. So my first question is, it says enforcement issues. How would the enforcement issues in a 200-foot buffer be different than enforcement issues that might occur in a 100-foot buffer?
You just said more of them, right?
Yeah, right. Yeah, I'm a little bit confused about that recommendation.
So partly in a 200-foot buffer, you don't have coastline on some of the properties. So that's a concern that, from the variance perspective. But then the other concern is that folks will just go ahead and do things and you'll have more people that you have to, you know, drive around and say, oh, this person built this and they didn't have permission and that person built that and they didn't have permission. You're increasing that area. And their, kind of, their coastal resiliency overlay. I guess you could do the same level of education in a 200-foot buffer and a coastal resiliency overlay. I just really thought you guys would like that idea, so.
Yeah. I, I get it. I, I just, I mean, I think the point of making the 200-foot buffer was to have a larger buffer. And I think we discussed that for a while. And there's always going to be enforcement issues. So, I mean, I don't mean to go into my comments, but that was my question is, is there, it seems like it's the same enforcement issue and whenever you try to make a regulation, you're going to have enforcement issues. That's just the nature of it and you don't regulate unless you have an intent behind it. So that was just my question. I'll just leave it at my question, I'll make my comments later. And then my second question. What was my second question? Okay. That question and. I'm blanking out here. This is Sharon, you offered to give me a paper packet so I could write down my questions. And I said I didn't need it because I only had a few and now I'm forgetting my question. If you don't mind, if I think of my question, may I ask it later? Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
I'm confused about the coastal resiliency overlay. What, what is it?
Well said.
So it's, it's essentially an expanded buffer area, right? So instead of saying, we're going to take this buffer, which is addressing coastline specifically, and expand it so that we can increase and improve the mitigation in the environment, let's actually create it separately so it has its own set of regulations, right? That don't rely on the coastline and cover the areas that are going to be susceptible to sea level rise and increased flooding. So that you're, you are having a higher standard for a larger area. And it makes sense to have a higher standard for the larger area because the residents of those area, they're susceptible to sea level rise, to higher storm surges, to higher amounts of stormwater or even just wetland incursion in their properties. So it makes sense.
So how, how do you, so we adopt this coastal resiliency thing?
With the critical area. It would be part of the critical area regulations.
And so how do we figure out what's, how to map it?
So we would use the mapping that was done as part of the coastal resiliency plan or as part of the comprehensive plan, which has the sea level rise mapping on it.
I mean, that's it?
We would, we would use that map. And we will, obviously, if you guys like this plan, the Critical Area Commission and I are going to work together on how they're recommending to flesh it out because they're going to have to approve it. It's not typical, it's not part of their model ordinance, it's something different. And, you know, what mapping, it would have to be added to the critical area map. But we, the town has the mapping already to use.
Yeah, it just, it just seems like we've, we've got a zoning map, we've got a critical area map and now we've got the coastal resiliency map and who knows what other maps we'll, we'll come up with. And I'm, I'm, so I'm, I don't see a need for, I mean, if we want to redefine the, the buffer zone to be 125 feet or 227 feet, whatever. But to initiate a whole new set of terminology with a whole new criteria, it doesn't seem to me to be, make sense.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I'm with Larry in the sense that somebody comes to us with a site plan. Get this right. And they're close to the coastline. And we decide we're going to use the coastal resiliency. I mean, how, how would that be applied to a site plan? How would the potential builder understand what he'd be subjected to with this coastal resiliency, what's it called?
It's an overlay. It would actually.
How would it be applied? I'm with Larry, how, how?
Right, so.
Would it actually work?
It would be part of the critical area mapping, right? So right now, you know, you're looking at whether you're in the IDA, the RDA, or the LDA and you're looking at whether you're within 100 feet of a waterway. And so this would be mapping that would come up, like, or the buffer is mapped. And so this would be on the map as well. And so when you pull up to look at where you are in the critical area, you would find that you are in the IDA and in this overlay area rather than being in the IDA and in the buffer area.
Oh, it's stationary?
It's stationary, no, yeah.
Okay, no, I just had this image of somehow it moving or. No, I, I.
No, that's reasonable, yes.
Problem that the Critical Area Commission has with our 200-foot buffer is it isn't like it is in the rest of the state?
It's that.
What is the actual issue of our choosing to have that?
That the buffer regulations are coastline-related. And a 200-foot buffer includes a large swath of land that is not coastline, which will require there to be more variances than you would normally have, which is going to put the Board of Appeals to more work. And by having the overlay, you'll achieve the goal of having higher regulations over a wider area without burdening the Board of Appeals.
I'm a very visual person, so we're looking at the critical area map. And instead of having buffers noted, noted, or with the 100-foot buffer would be there.
The buffer would be there, that's required.
Then we'd have our own, whatever you called it, critical area.
They called it, you can call it whatever you want. The recommend, you know, when we were talking about it in the critical area, staff suggested the idea. That's what they called it. That doesn't have to be called that.
So if we're looking at a map, we see the 100-foot. Where will that overlay area physically be? Will it be 200 feet out?
It, it will match the mapping that you had done for sea level rise incursion. So they'll.
And how does that compare with a 200-foot buffer?
It depends on the land and its, you know.
Geography, right? Like how water would land on it?
Right. So if you look at your coastal resiliency map or the comprehensive plan mapping, there's sea level rise mapping. So we'll just, you guys would have to decide which, you know, there's different years for the sea level rise. If you wanted to use that or if you wanted to say, we're just going to do a, you know, instead of a 200-foot buffer, we're going to call it a 200 or a 500-foot overlay. You could do that. It was just suggested that tying it to the, the resiliency and the sea level incursion makes sense because those are the areas that are going to be affected and the areas that are, what we're trying to protect with the ordinance.
Well, a builder would look at that map and recognize that if he's in the other.
Find your house and look at what areas you're in.
So it would be clear to somebody looking at the map that there were regulations that were going to apply that were beyond the 100-foot buffer.
Right, and they could be similar to the 100-foot buffer, they just wouldn't be coastally dependent.
So, do you have a question, Commissioner?
I have two, but.
No, go ahead.
My first question though is, what is the current, whatever is, as we're trying to make a decision of like A, B, or C? I'm wondering what our current regulations are so that, because I would maybe think B, if that's like the way to get it, like more protection quick, more quickly? Or C, like if, C makes more sense, but if there's not enough protection right now and that adds more protection more quickly and then we backpedal, does that make sense?
Right, and I think that's the decision that I'm kind of asking about, which is, so the current mitigation requirement is a one-for-one requirement. The proposed critical area ordinance is a two-for-one requirement. So if you adopt it, so adopting it with the 100-foot buffer gets it through the Critical Area Commission faster. That's why that's B is the way it is. That gets something in place with the higher regulation, mitigation level sooner. So that's why, because I know we want that. And so that's why that option isn't there.
And so hypothetically, if you went forward with the B option, which maybe doesn't completely satisfy what everybody might want in the long run, but that moves at least that we have that level of protection and then it can be added on to versus we have less protection right now and we're sitting with less protection longer as we try to get the more robust protection.
Exactly, and, and that's why I said immediately start on it. You can, you know, direct me to immediately start meeting or even concurrently meet with them.
Okay, so that changes like how I would want to vote? Then the second thing is, so 200 square feet in some way, or 200 feet feels kind of arbitrary in some ways, right? Like whereas if we're looking at a map and how water is actually behaving in an area, that would give us potentially not that different of a square footage coverage, but it would just be better suited to the square footage we want covered, whether or not it is connected to a coastline?
It would cover much more area than the 200-foot buffer.
Okay.
That was one, that was, which one would cover more?
A coastal resiliency overlay would cover much more area than a 200-foot buffer.
Than the buffer, and that's option A, is that?
B.
B's a 100-foot.
B and C both consider a coastal resiliency overlay. A is to just move forward with what we have.
Okay, so A doesn't include the overlay at all.
Right.
B and C do. But if, as soon as we go with the coastal resiliency overlay, that is greater protection than the 200-foot.
It'll cover a larger area than a 200-foot buffer, so.
And more restrictive. And you, according to you, you're saying there would be less opportunity for variances because of, it's more restrictive.
Right, there would still be opportunity for variances. But there would be less need for them because it's not coastally based. It's based on the environment that is susceptible to sea level rise. They had a lot of different suggestions. You know, they said there's some areas where they have a tax in, like, so everyone in the critical area pays a tax. I don't, I'm not saying, trying to make myself unpopular, but, and then it goes into a fund that funds stormwater and coastal resiliency features to protect the critical area and the, you know, their own homes. Some places just charge a fee and say like, okay, if you want to build a deck in the critical area, it's going to cost $500 versus outside. And then they collect all those fees to help protect the homes and businesses from what is inevitably coming, so.
I did remember my question.
Okay, so let me try to get some order. So do you have any further questions, Commissioner Rutke? Okay, so let me try to get some order. So do you have any further questions, Commissioner Roskay?
I don't have any further questions, but I love the idea of a greater area would be protected and that I'm not hung up on the 200-foot buffer. I just didn't understand. It almost sounded like it was floating and apparently is not. So, no, I don't have any questions. I'd rather like it.
Commissioner Weaver?
An answer. Thank you.
I share.
Okay. So I guess there is an actual B that I guess we could add to this one. And the D would be to go back to the 100-foot that is in the model.
Correct.
And not have the 200-foot, which initiates all these problems with enforcement and variances, et cetera.
See, I knew there was an option.
There is another option. There is another option here. Because I'm seeing that, my concern, okay, the next question is, when you have coastal resiliency overlay, I'm all of a sudden seeing that coastal resiliency plan coming forward, which we had nothing to do with and we have no control over as a planning commission. But yet you have another group who has, in my opinion, they have vested interests, you know, that really may not be my interest. But my concern is, is that if we did do a coastal resiliency overlay, would we have any controls of planning commission in setting up the rules on that? Or would we have to use the coastal resiliency plan as our model or our guide?
No, this would be entirely your regulations. So it's just the name that they threw out. So you could call it the sea level rise susceptibility. I wish I could think of something that started with an S instead of saying overlay. You call it whatever you want, but the regulations regarding it will be part of the Critical Area Ordinance. So you will be, you'll be diverging from the model ordinance to add this extra piece. But it will be part of the Critical Area Ordinance that you send over for approval.
So if we, everybody within that coastal resiliency overlay would all have the same regulations?
As long as that's what you decided. If you wanted to give, I haven't overlaid the mapping yet to see if there's like LDA or RCA that would be in that overlay. So you might want to, you could give each section its own regulations or you could give it all one regulation. That, you know, if you're in RDA and the coastal resiliency overlay, this is your mitigation. If you're in the LDA, that, so you have the flexibility to decide as a group what you want to do and how you want to do it.
And we would also be able to partake in the mapping of this district? Or would that be something that would already be done? Or that's already the coastal, I mean, that's already the critical area?
It's just kind of recommended that you have the mapping, so.
That we redo the mapping?
Just rather than, you know, take a look at the mapping that you have, see which, because I think it's like a 20-year, a 50, I think it's 20 and 50, there might be a 35 in there that it's mapped for. So if you just kind of pick one that you wanted to make the overlay, it would, it would make sense and it would save, you know, having to, you know, get in the weeds on what the map is. And then that lets you choose which level you want to go with.
So this, I know that other towns have done this overlay because I've looked it up and I've researched that. So I do know that this is something they've been using. But never having done one before, I don't know anything about it. So I'm kind of playing this one by ear. But so we would have the ability to make all the regulations and all the rules that would go along with this overlay. But it would, it would mean that we would be putting a lot more residences within this area that's gonna be more restrictive, create a little bit more problem as far as concerns about, you know, well, I'm sure people would not be happy to hear that they would have more restrictions or more, you know, rules as far as fees and lieu or fines or whatever. They would not be happy about that. So we would be entertaining that, those issues. It is a complicated, this is gonna be, it would be very complicated to do this, I think. Would it protect us better? Maybe. On the other hand, would it cause a lot more problems? You know, I mean, what, what problems would you foresee besides creating problems as far as the fines and the fees and loews and all that? What other problems do you see with, with entertaining this coastal resiliency overlay?
Yeah, I mean, I think residents, you know, they don't want to have, right? That, and when you are a property owner, it's, it's your house and you want to add a deck and enjoy that. And nothing here is saying, you can't, you don't have to say you can't build a deck, right? But if that deck is increasing the impervious surface, then maybe your neighbor down the hill is having more flooding in their backyard, right? Or maybe you're having, so the impact of everyone's deck in an area that is susceptible to sea level rise and the water table is rising, it's impacting everyone. And so if you live in that area, it's really in your interest to come together and do something to protect your property and investment. And there's not a mechanism, right, for that to happen? So this is, it's frustrating when you're a property owner, you want to build a deck and you have to pay more because you live in an area that's susceptible to sea level rise. And at the same time, having your house underwater because nothing was done is frustrating and bad for your property value. So it's, it's a difficult problem. And, and I think that's, you guys are dealing with difficult problems. And I think you're doing a good job being thoughtful about it.
So when you're talking about a robust fee and lieu program?
Yes.
Or fine program? You're saying that what has been entertained already in, in your, in the ordinance here, the draft, that would not be what we'd be using here? You'd be increasing it or changing it? Or, I mean, you'd be, I mean, what do you mean by a more robust fee and lieu program?
So because you would have a bigger area that is having a higher level of mitigation and because you have a lot of small lots of kind of, there's some non-conforming structures on that, some of the proprietors are going to have difficulty mitigating. And so you can have the fee and lieu program that we talked about, right? So that they can pay into that. But the fee and lieu program needs to be structured so that if you live on B Street and you're paying into fee and lieu, that money is being spent to protect your property on B Street. So you're having sort of a micro impact with that fee and lieu. That's what they're recommending. The other piece of that is to ask the question, is it equitable to charge people as they, whether they can mitigate? So if you can mitigate onsite, you don't have to pay. If you can't mitigate onsite, you do have to pay. Or is it more equitable to say, when you are doing X, regardless of whether you can mitigate or not, you're gonna pay this fee in for this project that's gonna protect the homes on your street? So that's, so that's what robust means, is looking at all of those different aspects of how to structure it. What's the most fair and equitable way to structure it? What the proper fees are, how, those, how and where those fees are spent?
So how do you see our little town handling that type of enforcement? I mean, who would do that? I mean, do we have to hire somebody to engage in all those, you know?
For the fee and lieu?
Enforcement of the fee and, I mean, because this sounds very involved and it sounds a little more complicated than what we have right now. You would have to have a full-time employee, more or less, going and making sure that, you know, the program is, is being handled properly and accounting for everything. I mean, I think we've talked about that before, but it sounds like this would even create a bigger problem with that whole, you know, trying to enforce the fee and lieu and fine program.
Yeah, I think
You're gonna have a much larger
So it's a difference B, I don't think the fee and lieu program itself takes more to run either way. I think that it's a permit enforcement, right? There's always, you know, here's what I'd like to do or here's what I'm just gonna do and not get a permit. And, and that is an enforcement issue. I don't know whether you would need a full-time staff person or you wouldn't. I did mention this idea to staff and they did not raise any red flags. But it's something that as, if you decide to move forward this, with this, as you move forward with this, I think it's a question that should be asked and have the full-time town staff, you know, let you know whether it's going to work or not.
It would be a bigger problem because we're talking about a larger area? I'm not
It's
Why is it more likely that?
So it's, it's just, if I just build a patio and no one notices, I didn't have to mitigate and I didn't have to pay a fee to get a permit. If I get a permit, right, then I have to do these things. Now, if I build a patio without a permit and someone finds out about it, I can be told to pull up my patio. This is, since I have been here, we have had to tell someone to pull up a patio. And so some people want to take that risk.
Would be true in the buffer?
That's true, all over.
Right. So I'm trying to figure out where is the extra work coming from? Is it because the area with this overlay is larger and you think people would be more likely to?
The incentive to build without a permit is higher, right? If your mitigation, and this is period, right? If your mitigation in the buffer right now is one-for-one, okay. It's fine, I'm taking out a tree, I put another tree. It, when it becomes two-for-one, maybe you're wondering if you can get away with the deck. We are looking at a lot more things and pulling a lot more, hey, does this have a permit? I don't know how much of that was happening before I was here, but I know that in, you know, I'm coming in the office early. We're talking about the permits that are coming in, we're noticing things and saying, did that have a permit? And addressing those issues. And so it's an issue everywhere, even outside of the critical area.
But I, I, I thought I heard you
No, sorry.
I thought I heard you say the problems would be greater with the overlay. And I'm asking you, what would generate the additional problems? Is it the size of the geography? That wouldn't make somebody, or is it the two-to-one, one-to, I mean, I, I'm not clear as to why we just wouldn't go with that overlay because I love the idea of protecting as much land as possible and charging what we need to, to take care of business, but.
I think the way it was kind of sold to me is with the 200-foot buffer, it's a little more, it's hard to see exactly how that's helping you as a resident, right? If we start talking about this resiliency or sea level rise area, then the education piece going out and the understanding how the program is helping you directly can actually increase compliance. It's not gonna get everyone, right? But when you understand that the money you're paying in so that you can have a patio is actually coming back to you and maybe grass is planted to mitigate that storm level rise, maybe a, you know, more structural stormwater feature depending on what is needed. And some of what is needed is like the coastal resiliency plan is saying what's needed. So that might be where that plan comes in, is how the fee and lieu gets spent is somehow related to what that plan is recommending. Did I answer your question? I'm not sure if I'm
All right. Let me rephrase it one more time. I'll take my best shot at it. Thank you for your patience.
It's okay.
I thought you said that if you have the overlay plan, that it's more likely that people will try to get around it? Is, or that there are more people that
There's more people, there's more people impacted. And the more people you impact, the more people are going to, you know, the more people are going to
The greater the number of
Right. The greater the number of people who are gonna do things without a permit. But you do currently have people doing things without a permit, regardless of whether in the critical area or not.
I'm okay.
Okay. So okay, so when you say we can do a more robust fee and lieu program or fine program, whatever, we can do that in a coastal resiliency overlay as opposed to right now? I mean, why does that overlay allow me to have a more robust fee program than I can now? I'm trying to figure out why, you know, you put it
Oh, it does, yeah. I guess maybe my wording choice.
Okay, now, why don't we just do that now and just, you know, enforce it all? And make sure that it's done because then we just have the 100-foot, we enforce it, we don't have to worry about anything else because it's already been, because I think when we talked about the 200-foot, it was a frustrate, well, at least for me, it was a frustration that, you know, the more, the better. But if indeed you take the 100-foot, which was, which is the model, and you just truly enforce that, that's probably at this point in time, all you really need, if it's truly enforced. But unfortunately, I don't think we have, you know, have had the opportunity to enforce it as well as we should have been. But I think the concern, because you just brought it up a second ago, if we use that coastal resiliency plan and we use it for a larger group and the free boarding they're recommending is 4.5, is a 2.5, you're doubling the, you know, the free boarding, you're gonna be, you know, taking the height up another probably. And if you do any berms, like has been recommended, you could be seeing, you know, housing heights of 50 to 60 feet all along this area. Which, you know, is, I mean, I'm already hearing a lot of complaints about how tall that library is in North Beach. And if we have the entire, you know, the entire area down here, 50 to 60 feet tall of buildings, it could just take the entire small town approach away, you know, from what we've been trying to, we've been trying to retain. So anyway, I was just, you know, trying to go on that line. I was just trying to think, well, is that what you're referring to when you're saying, take that coastal resiliency plan, use those ideas in that plan and, and using it in this overlay? And if so, that means that, you know, we have to then allow for whatever it takes to mitigate potential flooding down the road? And who knows what that's gonna be really?
Yeah, you don't have to use the plan. It just seems that if you, for structuring your fee and lieu, you have that, right? If, if you're not comfortable using that to structure your fee and lieu, it's, this is the ordinance you all are recommending. It's all in the Critical Area Ordinance. So the fee and lieu structure will be in that ordinance. So if you don't like the idea of using the coastal overlay plan to set up that fee and lieu program, you can set it up a different way.
Okay. Okay. Are we gonna be, now, if I could address the chair, are we gonna be able to go back through some of the other issues then that Ms. Franklin added to, you know, can we go back through that? Or when do we want to go beyond that?
We can go back through that, but I think we should decide if we can, what we're gonna do with about the buffer. The coastal resiliency plan overlay, we should make that decision and then we can go. Because I think that is really the crux. And certainly if we're going to go with option B and then we're gonna start the amendment, I, I, I think we should determine that first. Commissioner Brown, do you have any comments?
I'm gonna ask my two questions.
Okay. Let me just, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't get to ask questions yet. I'm sorry, I thought you already did.
But let's, let's have Commissioner.
I thought we were going to discussion.
Do you have any questions for the town planner regarding this?
Yeah, I, so, so this overlay would be, at the, at the south end of town, would be right at the coast. There wouldn't be any overlay because there's no, the threat at the north end of town, or south end of town, excuse me, is, is the cliff erosion, which isn't, is not necessarily a critical area problem. Or at least it's only, it's limited, okay? As opposed to everywhere else. And so you're saying this overlay would not include that up there?
So it could. You know, you could choose to expand it there so that you could use funds from a fee and loo program to engage in activities that might help protect the area more. You can expand the mapping or you can choose not to expand the mapping. That's gonna be your decision if you decide to go with the overlay, how you want to do that.
And, and the fee and loa, we've talked about how that's, that's going to run. But that would not be, that would only be for new things.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So what exists now along our waterfront can materially change it. There's no change in fee and loa. So it could be a very small area.
Correct.
There isn't, there isn't a lot of land along the waterfront that can be developed. So, so you'd have to wait until a developer or redevelop.
Well, the fee and loo would apply to individual homeowners. It's a way to kind of get your whole street to go in on property protection. So yes, if you don't build a deck or build a patio or take out vegetation, but in addition, or any of those things, then you wouldn't be paying into it. I think that's why some towns have like a taxing district overlay so that everyone has to pay into it. But if you did, you know, expand your patio, put in a new deck and make it a larger deck, or make the slats closed, so it's now impervious. All of those things would trigger you to have mitigation and that could trigger fee and loo, would depend on what you guys decide, right? It doesn't eliminate the idea of having onsite mitigation. It says, are there two pieces? Or is there some amount of mitigation that happens in site? And then we trigger fee and loo? And how does all of that work? So I don't have a idea or plans to present to you because I wanted to make sure this was something you guys wanted to do. So all the options are yours.
Okay, and the very last sentence of your memo, it says that the Critical Area Commission recommended we include this, this phrase, which includes a civil penalty of $10,000 per day. But it, it looks like it's pretty general, I mean.
Right. So I saw this phrase a lot when I was actually doing the initial research on the violations. And then they recommended that it be put in. And what it does is it gives some flexibility. So if someone has done something really egregious and clearly intentional, it gives you the flexibility to make sure that no one else does that again, right? So that's why they recommend that.
But it doesn't say clearly egregious, it just says.
Well, right, it gives you that leeway. It's giving you flexibility, right?
$10,000 says egregious.
Yeah.
That's, that's a spell it.
If that isn't attention-getting, nothing is gonna be. That's all right.
Commissioner Blackwelder.
Thank you.
Go forth.
Um, just for clarity, you are not saying that no variances would be permitted in the overlay?
Right, you still have variances.
Right, yes. Okay. And then how does, going into overlay process, how does that affect site plans coming down the pike?
Right, and I think that is the question Commissioner Weaver asked. Did I get that? Sorry.
Standpoint. I mean, can we just keep on making critical area regulations? Does it stop site plans coming to us because we're still doing it?
Right, right. So it, it may be advisable, right, to adopt something now because there are site plans coming down the pike.
My thought as well.
Right.
Because they're on your desk.
No, they aren't. But yes, since they are coming down, it may be advisable to adopt something now and then go into the overlay process. And that's why I included that option.
Right, I, I, yeah. I don't see why we're backing off of the 200-foot buffer personally. I think we should just send it right up to the town council. And the mayor is on the Critical Area Commission. He had access to the Critical Area Commission. He's an elected leader. He has access to staff who's worried about enforcement. I think as a group, we chose 200 feet. And we did that with lots of advice from our planner. It doesn't sound like what is being recommended by the Critical Area Commission is, is going to create any different or less enforcement issues. And we know, we know the council has no problem changing our, our wishes. So we, we've, we've given Critical Area a lot of due diligence. And I would like to see us pass it as is. That's my thoughts.
Hey. My only thought, when you talk about the fees and loo, you, you made sure, made it a point to say that there are fees that are not fee and loo, but basic development fees, such as building a deck. Have you seen a lot of those other type of development fees that, that would generate fee and loo?
Right, so that's just an option. So when I was speaking with Critical Area, they were saying some folks do this taxing, some folks do it in mitigation of fee and loo, some folks just charge a flat rate and require you to do one-for-one mitigation. So I wanted to provide you with all of those options that they provided me with to consider. So, and I'm sure there's more options. There's always, always option D, that someone else will think of.
Another question.
D.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, it's.
I was just gonna ask you, so 200 feet, I have measured from the coastline in, but what would the overlay, I mean, how much more land would we take in with an overlay than the 200 feet? Would it be much more than that?
I haven't run calculations, but like just based on my memory of the mapping, yes, it would be more. Significantly more.
Significantly more?
That is, that is my mental, the little, you know, my visual brain going, this map looks like this and this map looks like that. And that seems like a lot more. I have not run a calculation, so please don't quote me on that, even though I'm being recorded.
We have to have a field trip to determine.
Right, exactly. So we, we would just, we would just run the numbers.
Why wouldn't you just consider the 200-foot buffer to be an overlay? I mean, if that's gonna, I mean, I, I'm not sure I understand.
You could do a 200-foot buffer and, and tailor the regulations away from coastline only. Yes, you could, you could do that. So what they're saying is that the, the 100-foot buffer regulations are tied to it being coastline. And to, there are a lot of houses that aren't coastline in that extra 100 feet. And so you could say, we're gonna have an overlay that's 200 feet and it has these different regulations or these regulations that are the same as the 100-foot buffer and these ones that are different. So, yeah.
So when we were talking about it being an arbitrary number, the 200 feet would be an arbitrary number.
Right.
I guess you could argue that, yes, I deserve a variance because I'm not even, I'm maybe in 200 feet, but I'm up a little hill and I really am not gonna be, you know, part of the issue. And maybe the 200 feet could look arbitrary in that regard. And then if you're gonna do the, the coastal resiliency plan, you would actually tie it, or I'm sorry, the map, or you call it?
Let's call it overlay. We should call it the climate sea level rise overlay or something. Separate it, yeah.
You would tie it to our flooding map that we have got. We have been sent by either NOAA or whoever, whatever organization sent us those maps.
Right.
We would actually tie it to that. So we would have a less arbitrary way of determining who would be in that group of homes would be.
A reason for it.
There'd be a reason for, it'd be an obvious, less arbitrary reason, because you brought that up and I think that was an excellent idea. And, and that would be the reason to do an overlay, is that it's less arbitrary.
Yes, your home is impacted by this. Therefore, this applies to you.
Okay, all right, I, I kind of see that point, okay. And so the mapping then would be done by staff and coastal, I mean, the Critical Area people and whoever else?
Yeah, I think we, we have mapping, so it'd just be a matter of kind of combining that, presenting it to you all, you know, making any changes. And I think Critical Area did the mapping of the buffer. So I'll speak with them and we'll make sure you can get the mapping of the overlay. And they'd need that layer anyway, so.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I certainly agree with the overlay that I think people are, I, I certainly like the idea that people are mindful of, it, it, it seems to take out the, I guess, it's, it covers everyone in the fact that, you know, some people, absolutely. I, I think that's their methodology, is that they don't want to, they don't want to get the permit. So they, they roll the dice and say, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna build the patio and then. But I think with the overlay, I think you have people all on the same page. So I think they're very mindful because they've gotten, they now have a vested interest. For example, you know, you violated, those monies from the fee and loo are coming to the community. And so I think they're a lot more of a watchdog and, and would be greater protection in that regard. So I think that, I think that's important because, you know, you know, my experience has been that, you know, we, we roll the dice as far as, will anybody check that I have a permit? No. And I, I do, I have a, I have a sense that there is a lot, perhaps with your employment, I think there is a review now of these, of applications that are actually looked at very, very closely with compliance to what is permitted. And whereas in the past, I think there's been more flexibility or less oversight. And I think that is changing. And I, so I like the overlay because it's, it's more restrictive, not less. And I also like the community piece, as far as everybody now. Because, you know, as soon as somebody opens, you know, their own business, I cut hair and that's not a big deal. But as soon as it becomes impactful, like, oh, there's cars, there's traffic, people are calling. I, I know, you know, people used to do that all the time with the IRS. As soon as they saw somebody getting revenue from something, they would drop a dime in a minute, so.
I think that's a really good point you make about almost, it's almost like a critical area neighborhood.
Right, absolutely. Because who wouldn't be mindful now? So, and I, and I know it's specifically right now up on, up on the hill. We've got some, you know, real issues as far as sloughing on the hillside. And that's got to, you know, that's, that's gotta be looked at. And I know a lot of people purr the town, why am I paying for something that's up on the campgrounds? I don't live there, so why should I have that benefit? You know, why should I pay that when look at my community? So I think it's.
Right, it's kind of making you care if your neighbor's house, your neighbor is losing yard, right? And, yeah.
Can I suggest a new D, though, that I think maybe?
Oh, B.
Yeah, that kind of combines, I think, though, what Lori was saying, that let, you guys had talked about 200-foot. If we're gonna move forward with something, are we going to get blocked with the 200-foot buffer? Could we move forward with 200-foot and then change to the overlay versus moving forward with 100 feet and then moving to an overlay?
The Critical Area Commission is going to recommend a 100, according to staff, right? What the comments that will come back from Critical Area Commission when it's submitted is you should go to a 100-foot buffer. Well, I, I don't, I, I can't say, right? They, they're just.
Submitting it re, was for them to provide recommendation.
Right, and that, that's, this is the recommendation that, so we wanted to get staff's thoughts. What is the Critical Area Commission gonna say so we can make those changes ahead of time? And this is what that comment is, is that if you submit it with the 200-foot buffer, it is going to be recommended that you move it back to the 100-foot, which is why you might want to consider this other option because it allows you to do what you want to do and get it through.
So the 200-foot buffer really is off the table after we had such constant, we, I mean, it's like, we, we did about 200 feet versus 125 versus, and we came up with that.
So I will tell you, so the planner that Chris worked with at Critical Area Commission is out on leave. So I am new, working with a new planner. So we do not know what their discussions were. But we understand that there was a lot of back and forth on that and that this idea may have kind of come about because you just put a bunch of new people in a room together and new ideas happened. And so that's probably why it didn't come up before. But Chris was definitely working very hard to get the 200-foot buffer. But it sounds like it was still a concern.
So the whole, our whole premise of having the 200-foot buffer is really out. So it's, I mean.
You, you can still adopt it, right? They're just gonna recommend against it.
Right, so the whole point was to have them, as Commissioner Blackwelder say, give a recommendation. And I would assume that their recommendation isn't just arbitrary. They're just trying to be argumentative with us about, no, 100 feet, not 200. But. they're just trying to be argumentative with us about, no, 100 feet, not 200. But, um, so that, I, I think that really colors if, why, why would we stay 200 feet when they don't recommend that? And the overlay with 100 feet is, is.
They want to help you achieve your goals. That's why they made that recommendation.
Right. And this was my problem with not having their written comments, because we're talking about basically a meeting with staff.
Yes, this is staff to staff.
Our, our staff.
Right.
Right, exactly. And so.
Our staff or their staff?
Their staff and.
Our staff is their staff.
I'm.
Mayor Mahoney is on the Critical Area Commission.
So I met with Critical Area Commission planners, because there, you can't really get preliminary, you, you can't ask a board, how would you guys feel if someone brought you, this isn't a site plan, I just want your preliminary opinion, right? That's gonna go to staff. People ask that question all the time. So that's the conversation that I had last Wednesday. And they, and they're the ones who write the reports, right? I'm the one here making a recommendation to you. We have site plans, I'm making that recommendation to you. So they can say, here's what the commission's gonna say. I can say, here's what the commission's gonna say. So, no, we don't have official comments from the actual commission, though, this will have to be submitted to them. And then it will be approved by the town board. But there's, there's not a way to get preliminary comments from them. This is what staff is going to recommend and what they know from working at the commission is going to come back. So.
So I do not think this needs to go into another sausage grinder and delay, delay, delay while we have site plans coming down the pike. And I think it's fine for the town council to work it out, whether they want to put 200 or 100 buffer. And they all have more access to all these people than we do. They have more access to staff. We don't have access to anything. We've been here for two hours. Um, and countless days, they had a 20 minute work session this last time. So I'm fine with them spending a little bit of extra time discussing in public, like we do, whether they want to send up 200 foot or 100 foot, and passing some critical area regulations in time for the site plans that are coming down the pike.
All right. Well, if we've all finished, um, the discussion, then I think, uh, we should make a decision about A, B, or C, what we're going to make a determination on.
Or should somebody? What, like, pa, make a move, make a motion about what they like to pass, and then we see if we all vote on that or not?
Or so we could just go, um, A, and then vote on A, and then if that doesn't pass, then we could go to B. Uh, the mod, and then there's the modified DE. Um, so that's, unless somebody wants to, if somebody has a hybrid right now of A, B, and C, and D, that they want to offer, and we can eliminate that one first or approve it. But I, I think we should, um, present the options and unless, if we want to go around the room right now and, and say which, would you like, and then we can make a vote of the options.
We can put a motion forward or we can do.
Okay, you can, go ahead.
I motion that we send the ordinance forward with a 100 foot buffer and immediately start an amendment process to add the coastal resiliency overlay.
So unless I'm seeing something different, that's option B. Okay. All right. Um, let's vote. Um.
We need a second.
Oh. Second? Okay. All in favor?
We need discussion.
I thought we've just had two hours of discussion.
I, well.
I'd like to motion to amend.
Okay. Well, let, let's go with the vice chair. What discussion or comment would you like to make?
Um, I'm, I'm just, um, just curious as to whether or not we just keep the 100 foot buffer and not do an overlay? Or if, um, we, um, I'm just trying to figure out if we need that overlay or not. I think Commissioner Brown had a point that we're adding a lot more infrastructure. And do we want to add that infrastructure right now? I don't know. And do we, do we have the staffing to then handle an overlay, which is gonna be very involved? There's gonna be a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of enforcement that I'm not sure we have the ability to handle.
Either way, you're kicking the can down the road about that discussion.
We're making a recommendation as whether the staffing is in place. If, if we make the recommendation and it's approved, uh, they're gonna, that's gonna be affected. Now, as far as the, um, you know, the overlay, I, I think we're moving back because now the overlay is more restrictive. And I think without the 100 foot buffer, without the overlay, I, I prefer that. But I, um, you know, I, I just thought that we were, wanted it to be more restrictive, not less restrictive. And without the overlay, it seems less restrictive to me because now we've also lost the 100 feet. The 200 feet, that's not gonna be approved.
Right. And I don't want to give anyone any excuse to slow roll this code like they slow rolled our design standards.
Yep.
So if they don't, let's not forget, they can recommend something to us. It's not all on us. We can send them this code. If they hate it, they can make their own code. We have spent hours on this commission trying to put more protective measures in place for the town. And every time we get something that protects it, there's some reason why we have to go back and drag our feet and take longer. When we get something that is non-protective, and we try to make it more protective, it comes up back over and over as non-protective. I'm kind of worn out on it. We need critical area regulations. We need better fees and lieu. Um, I appreciate, um, Commissioner Green Gold's memo that shows that the complaint that Mr. Donovan has about the fees and lieu is actually not really very valid because the town of Annapolis has even higher fees and lieu. Okay, but the push is always going to be to save somebody's bottom line, and it's the same people every time. And, and we really need to get regulations in place for our town. We need to get them up to elected leaders. And if they need to have a four hour meeting because they have the budget, the water park, which they're not addressing publicly, and other things, then they can have a four hour meeting.
Okay.
It's, it's time to pass regulations that protect our town and protect our finances.
Can we vote on this, on the motion before us?
Were you, were you going to make an amendment?
Uh, well, I was going to suggest that if we were considering this overlay, that we're not doing it in the immediate term. In the immediate term, we're passing regulations. Uh, maybe in the long term, we're toying around over the next six years because that's when a review of the comp plan is. Maybe there's something we can do. I, I, I agree with everybody that has said that this overlay thing is way too complicated and above this town's staff level and skill level at the moment. And we need to keep it simple. Um, so, I mean, I, I'm not going to necessarily, I would like to go down the list like Kathleen said, because I would vote to send. My preference is to send the 200 foot buffer over and to not to get, not to give anyone an excuse to slow roll this, this code by talking about overlays that will take months to make. Um, so, yeah, I, I rescind my offer for amendment. I'll probably just, I, I would just request that we go down the list so I can see if everybody's gonna vote down the 200 foot buffer first.
Well, then let's go with the motion that is, uh, currently on the table. We have a second. So let's, let's vote. All in favor of the Commissioner Weaver's motion? Say aye?
Commissioner Weaver.
This is B. This is number B. Send the ordinance with 100 foot buffer and immediately start an amendment process to add the coastal resiliency.
No, I.
No, she had, she's doing B.
Oh, but she said, you said 200?
No, I had just proposed that as a possibility before, but then through other, that wasn't what the motion was.
So you were talking B.
So the motion present, the motion before us is option number B on the memo, which is, send the ordinance with 100 foot buffer and immediately start an amendment process to add the coastal resiliency overlay. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay. So the motion fails. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Sarah, the, the phrasing that you keep using is they will recommend. That's, you keep saying recommend. So if we send 200 feet and then we want to do the coastal duly squat.
Right.
Okay. They've recommended that we not do the 200 feet.
Correct.
Are you, are, are you speculating that they will slap that down or you don't know?
Staff is indicating that if you send the 200 feet, the comments that come back from the Critical Area Commission, the recommended changes will recommend changing it to 100 feet. So that doesn't mean you can't send the 200 feet. It's just that, that is the comment that's gonna come back. And that is why I think you should consider the overlay. Um, and, and that can just be something you bring up as a topic on your next month's agenda. But there's no reason not to send the 200 feet except for that, just kind of be prepared for it to turn out to be 100 in the end when it's adopted.
Well, I don't know that. I mean, it seems folly to me. Uh, I think you're saying in the most diplomatic possible way, send it up 200 feet, they're gonna come back and say 100 feet, and then all we've done is prolong this and then have to revisit this again.
Right.
I, I think, you know, if we're talking about moving on, it's two hours plus, we've been debating this. I, I, I think we should, um, listen to what you're trying to say ever so diplomatically, but not saying it. Um, so.
Because also, I guess, why did we ask for their recommend, right? I mean, wasn't that like part of the, to speed things up, to get the recommendation before we submitted?
Right. And the 200 feet, how many time, how, how many hours did we debate the 200 feet? First, it was 100 feet. Then it was, you know, should be 150. Can we make it 400? Can we, you know, I mean, we've, we've been all.
That's kind of your overlay in some places.
I mean, it was presented to us as an option.
But, I mean, how much discussion did we have over that? And that seemed to me to be arbitrary, you know? Um, and then finally, we come with the previous town planner, we come up with 200 feet and we're hearing this.
And so, but what's the harm in receiving a comment and just deciding whether to change it when we get the comment?
I'm into semantics when some, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, Jen.
I'm, you know, I think wording is, words are really important. If they want to recommend, and they have, and we disagree, that doesn't say they're going to deny us, does it? Is that, that's the fear.
Yes. So I guess to, to, talk to strategically and diplomatically, right? If you send 100 foot, and that's what they say, and you say, but we're allowed to amend this four times. We are sending this like this, but here is, we are immediately pursuing an amendment so that we can meet our goals, right? Critical Area Commission staff and myself, your staff, want to help you achieve this goal of protecting your town's character and the residents' property with effective regulations.
So as a practical matter, then, as we were, if we submit the 100, and we're busy as bees, spending 30 or 45 days, working on the, the other option, um, and somebody brings in a site plan, we're stuck with 100 feet.
Correct, right. So between, this is, so if, if you asked me for my recommendation, I would recommend you adopt something now.
Correct.
Right. Um, but I really think that this overlay addresses a concern that I'm hearing from a majority of the members of this commission. So I do think that you should consider pursuing that amendment to whatever you adopt now.
Whatever we adopt.
Correct. It's just.
200 or 100.
Right. And, and so the question you, you all have is if you get told no on the 200, is there a chance that your overlay won't be recommend, won't be adopted? I don't know. I don't know how all that works. But that's a question you guys, should you say, let's do 100 because we plan on doing this? Or should you just go with the 200?
I'm concerned about what's gonna come in, in three weeks.
Right. I don't.
That we've, we've, we've staked our claim on either 100 or 200. And then we're busy doing something else. But what about this guy who comes in and says, 100 feet? God, that's not bad. Or 200 feet, excuse me?
Right. So, I mean, right now, this isn't gonna be adopted in three weeks. And so that is, is the point that Commissioner Blackwelder is making is that sending something over is probably an advisable route. Um, and it's, it's kind of you all's call, what you think will be best to say, we're sticking with the 200, or we want to pursue this overlay and we're telling you that this is, we want you to support this when we offer the amendment. I don't know.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, so if we adopted the current, current draft ordinance that we have with the 200, we could still come back in a year and say, okay, let's go ahead and do an overlay, uh, coastal protection overlay or something.
Right.
We could still do that.
At any point.
At any point, we still come back and do that.
Chances to make amendments to it.
But the point is, we gotta get something in today if we want to have any protection with our draft.
I recommend, as I've been recommending, right? That you've been recommending that you get something adopted, right? Um, so that is still my recommendation. I just also really think that this coastal, you know, protection overlay is something you guys want to consider. I could be wrong.
No, so, so we can send it. I just, I am leery to signal to the town council and the mayor that we are now pursuing an amendment because I know how that narrative's gonna go. Let's wait till we get the whole thing. Let's, I just want us and them to adopt something.
So you think the wording of the coastal resiliency, what have you, we should just not even discuss it? We should just say to, say to the town council, 200, 100, whatever the hell it's gonna be. And then we, in 45 days, we can change our, not change our mind, but decide to add that to it. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I do think that. I mean, we, we can discuss the overlay more. I think it has some potential. I, I'm reading some of it that, to me, is not appropriate. Um, some of the, this, this discussion about decks and homeowners paying, I, I don't, I don't like that. I, I think that people pay taxes.
That wasn't a recommendation. That was, I had, I was given a list of ideas and options.
Right. Yeah, I, I think that nickel and diming individual homeowners is not going to help the critical area. What's gonna help the critical area is not building the apartments that are planned there, uh, not giving away the fids. there, not giving away the fids. It would have been not putting crazy density on Cox Road and, you know, all, all these things are stormwater management, density and traffic nightmares that are still being pushed forward by some people. But yet, we're going to talk about charging people to build a deck, individual homeowners, that, so.
Keep it simple. Let's, let's propose something and move forward.
Yeah, that's, I do think we should do that.
We can't move this forward without.
Through other pieces of it too, right? Aren't there other parts of this?
No, we can.
There's additional recommended changes from the Critical Area Commission. I don't, none of them seemed like anything anyone on this board would have a problem with, but I don't know if you've looked at them.
I think the one on page 14.
Good. So the one on page 14.
I mean, not to jump the thing, but I was just trying to think for our planning purposes of what we need done.
We should discuss that.
Something else that, like, I think we have to just kind of vote, right? Stop discussing it so that we can get to that other thing, otherwise, we aren't passing this on tonight.
Yes, you're right. Absolutely right.
So do we have another option that we are going to present and remember, or should I just go through? No, we're going to look at option A.
I thought we were going through the.
We're going to go through the regulation first.
We're going to go through this regulation before we go to that, because that would be the final motion, right?
No, I think that's one piece, and then we have to like decide what, if we're going A, B, or C, and then we have to move on, right? To like, are we going to start talking about page 14's recommendation?
Right. If the right, if the right recommendations, if the town planner doesn't think that they are going to be an issue, I think what we should do, it's 8:15, I think we should choose what option we're going to do, and then if it's, it's not going to be as rigorous for us to look at the other changes made by the commission, then we should be able to do that quicker.
The only thing is, we'd have to pass it as amendment. So if we made any amendments in the other pages, then we'd have to entertain another motion.
That's right. That's what I'm thinking, too.
That's what, yeah.
That's what I was saying. That amendment should include all the changes that we're trying to make in here.
Well, why don't we pick an option and then go through, and then we can incorporate them with, as well with the options for what we wrote on.
I'll start the motion with, I would like to make a motion that we choose course of action A, proposed by the town planner.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. That's the majority that passes.
I'm going to page 14.
So all the changes previously highlighted in red, is everybody fine with, or otherwise, I think we shouldn't just jump to 14. I think we should go through this.
I want to discuss the one on page three.
Pardon me?
Page three. Because that's.
Yeah, I think we should go through as they come. And let me just say, before we continue further, it's 8:15. I take it from the idea that you want to go through this, that we are going to continue going on. Okay.
Can I frank a comment on page three? D, subdivision resulting in 10 lots or less, or 10 dwelling units or less, do we not want to specify a size of property? Could the lots be over 15,000 square feet, as in C? It seems like we're opening a door for a lot of abuse on number D on page three. Am I missing?
So D was something you originally sent over. So.
I would like to make a motion that we delete D. Seems like we're opening the door to a lot of abuse. I would move.
Hold on. Let Sarah finish. Originally, we submitted this.
So this is how, yeah, the, only the track changes are changing. It changed D because I added E. It, it was strange. But we're referring to what applications will go to the critical area for review and, won't go to the critical area for review and comment, right? So what you're saying is, you're not saying they're automatically approved, you're saying we're not sending subdivisions with 10 lots or less, or 10 dwelling units or less, to the critical area for their review? That's all that's saying there. So you're still going to review it, but the Critical Area Commission isn't.
So D, so E, I'm sorry.
Right.
The old, the new E you have, when it says shall be sent to the CBCAC for review, but that's prior to us reviewing it. Is that how I'm reading? It just doesn't say that? I'm sorry. It says for review.
I believe it's kind of concurrent to some extent, but the, this piece that they recommended is saying that if you have a preservation area, you have a fids, whatever it might be, that if you're doing a project in the RCA and it's going to impact one of those preservation areas, even if it's a single-family dwelling unit or a subdivision resulting in 10, it's still going to the critical area for review. So it's adding an extra layer of protection in the RCA for preservation areas. They recommended that. It sounded like something you all would support. I put it in here. But it's not statutory. That's why it's not in all caps.
But it means that it will come back to us.
Yeah. It's still you. They're just going to review and comment on it.
Okay. So I, I was just, it's just a little confusing because it doesn't, it sounds like they're going to make the judgment not come back to.
They're only reviewing and commenting on all of this, right?
Okay.
So.
So we don't need to include in there that it will be reviewed prior to us reviewing it? Or, I mean, we would want to review it after they, we receive their comments, correct?
Right. It's not giving away your authority, the Critical Area Commission. It's just allowing them to provide you with their input.
Current, you said?
Well, it has to be before because.
So, yeah, you're going to want to see the comments with them, but it might, I'm not sure of the exact timing. I haven't done it yet with y'all, so.
So we don't want to include a motion to, to include prior, shall be sent to the CBCAC for review prior to the initial review by the Planning and Zoning Commission? We don't need to add that? Because I need their, I would think we'd want their comments before we review it.
Right.
So don't you think we should add that?
Isn't it generally taking you more than one meeting?
It would take a little more time, but I'm just saying, if you're going to have them review it, why would we have them review it if we're not going to see their comments?
I, I mean, and, and that's kind of procedural, too. Like, if, if that's how you want to procedurally do it, I don't know that it needs to be in here, because it's almost, you know, they, they have a certain amount of time to comment. And you're right, you're not going to want to approve it without seeing their comments, but you may want to look at it while you're waiting for their comments, so you can start to think about it and ask other questions.
Okay. It just seems a little confusing to, a little complicated there. But I, I mean, I would want their advice, but I don't, I don't know. Okay. I'll withdraw the motion then on that. I was.
I would motion to include E in red into our regulation.
Do I have a second?
What's the motion?
Page three.
Motion to include the phrase highlighted in red, section E. Notwithstanding the above, all projects that are in the RCA or have an impact on any preservation area as identified in Part Five of this ordinance shall be sent to the critical, the Chesapeake A Critical Area Commission for review.
As written.
As written. Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None opposed?
Chairman, at the very beginning, as this is to be drafted as a repeal and replacement of section 290-17 and 290-18 of our zoning ordinance, that's the complete 17 and 18, or?
You think you're referring to the pieces that are being kept? They would just get, the, the pieces that are being kept just go, get plugged in here.
17 and 18 goes away, and this replaces.
And this is seven. Right. Yeah. I believe, so there's, there's a change on page six, which is just a minor change. It's a, I meant, you change, say, approving authority. It still said board. Making it consistent.
Everybody's moving on from page six. B, approving authority in lieu of a board.
And then there's changes on page 13 is the next place.
12.
Oh, sorry. You're right. It's 12.
G. H.
It, it's the addition of H. It, for whatever reason, when I added an, a letter, it made the letter above red, but it's really, I don't know why it did that, but.
Above that, under E, where 10 is struck, struck through, is that?
Oh, that was a footnote reference that had been removed.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just ask a question. I know this, I hate to bring something up that we've already talked about a thousand times, but it keeps bothering me every time I see the word in number D, any institutional, recreational or education. I always think of an institution like as a bank or something like that, and I'm thinking, would you want to put a bank in, in the RCA?
Could be a government entity.
A bank is commercial.
But when you see institutional, it just seems so broad of a term.
It's really like, more like educational.
We already have the word educational in there. I'm just saying, I'm sorry, page 12.
Number D.
I'm just saying, do we need to make it a little more specific?
Institution.
Well, it's, it's just any of those uses that are permitted by right or special exception in the RC district. So that's, that's the more defined, is the go, go to the code and look at the RC district and see what's allowed.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And in this last piece, part H that they asked to add is because it's your underlying zoning that's regulating what's happening in the RCA, the Critical Area Commission would like to be able to approve any changes made to that zoning, so that if you went into the RC and zoned it to allow balloon factories, they would want to look at that first.
Is that an option?
No.
The, that comment next to the buffer is related to our conversation, so that's just a note to y'all, and I'll delete it.
So the reason for H is because it's a new use in the RCA? Is that what?
Exactly. So, yeah, they, they don't, the commission would be concerned that.
It's new.
It's a new use, and is that use consistent with what should be allowed?
Okay.
Yeah.
So does that move us to?
Then we get to 14. So I want to say, when the Critical Area Commission said, oh, why is this in here? I thought, I feel like the planning board asked me that question in September, and I said, your planner put it in here, you know, and, or kept it in, I thought it was kept in there, but it was put in there, and, and that was the advice that you were given, and I don't have that context. The Critical Area Commission said, the problem with this is what it allows is if my yard starts to have some wetland conversion, it allows me to just go and fill that in without regard to impact to my neighbors. And so there, the staff's opinion is that if this is left in, the Critical Area Commission will recommend that it be removed in order for the ordinance to be approved by them. So if I could put deletions in bold, I would have put this in bold as one that you really should, is heavily recommended that you adopt. Now, you don't have to, but that is a comment that will come back if you don't.
And you say, say the reason they thought it.
It, that you basically can fill wetlands in the critical area. That's what it's, it would allow.
That's correct.
And so, some of, any other approved beneficial use, right, kind of covers, it gives you a little flexibility, but it also limits that impact. I don't think, the next change is on page, oh, yes, you guys should advise.
Believe that or arc?
Oh, yes, we probably do.
So.
Could you move to accept H on page 12 and delete VI on page 14 together? Because I didn't move on the other one.
So, yes, I'll make a motion to, you said, accept H on page 12.
Mm-hmm.
And we also need to accept the buffer as well? Oh, no. Okay. Accept H on page 12, but remove item number six on page 14. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
None opposed.
Okay. That moves us to page 18, correct?
Yes, it's 18.
What is the Atlantic Coast Bays Critical Area?
Okay, hold on. I got, I got ahead of you onto page 19, so, or no, that's 18, because I'm making notes. There we go.
Atlantic coastal bays.
I spelled coastal wrong.
Jeez.
So.
You just spelled it different.
Yeah, that's right.
I did meet with the Critical Area Commission at 2:00 in the afternoon and provide these comments to you at 11:00 PM, so I apologize for any spelling error.
Long day for you.
Well, the question still stands. What is that?
Sorry, the Atlantic coastal base critical area? I, I think it's, they gave me this wording, right? So, pattern residential industry, 200-foot buffer, or, so I think we're talking about, you know, you have the criti, the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area, right? And that feeds into the Atlantic, so it's, it's just a piece of that overarching critical area.
Idaho, Atlantic Coastal.
It's, because it, it's where the Chesapeake Bay, it's where your water winds up eventually, right?
We have the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area and the Atlantic Coastal Bays. Two critical areas that apply to us.
It's, I mean, it's the same. It's, I mean, it's the same critical area, but also it's just, it's just.
Acknowledging it.
Acknowledging it and in providing a date about what existed where and when.
So it flows surely to the sea?
Yes, and it's, it's being specific, and there might be a case in which it matters that that date and specificity is in there. I can't know what that case may be, and that case may never come up, but they've requested that we include it, and I don't think it hurts the.
So is A, what is A and I, I mean, I'm sorry, it's A and one.
So it's just that previously, the, it was a modified buffer area means this statement, right? And the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area said, the actual technical definition of a modified buffer area is this, and it has two pieces. So instead of being just A, it's now A with piece I, you know, piece one and piece two.
So A, the, the modified buffer area means an area of land, period.
An area of land that has these two qualities.
Right.
Right.
But they stopped, they removed all the other verbiage.
Right, they wanted it to be defined properly.
Are item two, though? Excuse me. Item two necessary? Yeah, I got something caught.
They requested it for specificity, so, I mean, this isn't in all caps, so it's not statutory, but since they requested it for specificity, this is a comment they will make.
Does that mean that somebody can now make a local program and make a map and all of a sudden create even more modified buffer areas?
No, this, the local, it's, the local program is this, this is, this is the local program.
Right.
We can say as part of the Town of Chesapeake Beaches program.
No, I'm just, yeah, I don't know, yeah, it's, I guess. Yeah, as long as the local program isn't the Coastal Resiliency Committee.
It has to be.
My problem with this statement.
It ha, it has to be approved by the commission, and we can change commission to say CBCAC. No, it refers to the Critical Area Commission, so I can just change that to say CBCAC is what we're using for them. So that.
Is specific.
Right, they'll just map the whole town.
It, it means what it means regardless of whether we call it the, you know, how we denote it in here, but it, it's still referring to Chesapeake Bay Critical Area, but I've removed commission and put in CBCAC. So when you make your motion, just say with the modification the planner stated.
So we're removing the word commission and replacing it with CBCAC?
Yes, you're accepting the change on page eighteen and making.
Word commission.
And removing the word commission and replacing it with CBCAC.
Okay. And we've accepted two, at the bottom of the page, the CAC recommends considering tree replacement plans, and we'll send additional information?
That's just a note for y'all, that'll come out. The ones that are like in parentheses are, are notes that I took during the meeting. And so if it's in parentheses, it's being removed because it wasn't meant to be part of the ordinance, it was.
A list.
Right. Do, do you want to, I just want to make sure that, because you didn't actually move on the thing on page eighteen, and you usually do that.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Usually you make a motion to accept the comment.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the change on page eighteen, under, uh, under B one I. Well, A two.
A two, yeah.
A two, so B one A and one, little, and I, right?
I and, I and I.
And Roman numeral two, yeah. Do I have a second? All in favor? None opposed, okay. Oh, wait, there's.
There's a deletion on the bot, I think it's on, is it page nineteen?
Twenty-one, MBA, modified buffer area instead of BEA.
Yeah, they wanted.
It's in the box on the right.
That was, yeah, that was kind of a, we missed that, but to go back to page, it's eighteen or nineteen, there's a.
I'm sorry?
No, under for personal use provided the buffer functions are not impaired.
Yeah, they thought that gave a, a whole lot of, a lot more leeway than they would like to see.
Oh, they want to remove the two A.
Right.
Provided the buffer functions are not.
They felt personal use might be to install a balloon factory.
What page are we on?
On page eighteen, at the bottom.
At the bottom.
They were still on eighteen, thank you.
I thought it was on nineteen.
Two A at the very bottom, little Roman numerals. Two at the very bottom, under the parentheses, CAC recommends. You see where it says A for personal use, comma, provided the buff, that buffer functions are not impaired and trees cut or replaced? It struck through. Here.
Looking for a motion to accept that, that removal?
Yes.
I motion that we accept the removal of B I A. Page eighteen.
Two A, little Roman numeral two, A, right?
Oh, yeah.
A, little Roman numeral two.
I accept that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's page, I said, get this, no, twenty-one in the box.
That's kind of a grammatical thing, so you guys can probably.
A modified buffer area instead of BEA.
Then we come to the fee in lieu section.
Heard your loins. Page twenty-five. Is that right, that's where we are now?
Yes.
Can I have a question? Madam Chair?
Yes, Vice Chair.
So, um, this is a fee in lieu granting, and as you all received on your, on your desk, I brought, excuse me, I brought a, um, a staff report from the CAC from Annapolis, which indicates that they have a two-level fee in lieu program. And I was just wondering if you all entertained that when you were talking fees and lieu last, last month? I don't remember seeing it on the tape, but is there a way that we could have for over a certain square footage of lot that we increase it as they have in Annapolis? Or do you recommend that, or, I mean, you didn't suggest it for the last meeting, I was just wondering why we didn't entertain that for larger developers, you know? Because a larger developer, I think, at the four dollars would rather go with the four dollars a square foot than actually do the right thing and mitigate. So I think that's why Annapolis went and had, and did it, ten dollars a square foot. We don't have to go ten, but I'm just saying they had a six twenty-five for any development less than forty thousand square feet, and a ten dollars per square foot for anything larger than forty square, sorry, forty thousand square foot development. I was just wondering if we wanted to entertain that idea in a fee, fees and lieu project or in a program.
That's definitely something y'all can.
Because it seems like we would, it would be an incentive for a developer to do the fees and lieu.
They don't, uh, because I don't think you were here at the last meeting, and I think we really dug into the point, they don't get to choose if they want fees and lieu.
Right.
We, so like, that is part of why it didn't matter, but so much, we have never used the fees and lieu pro, program in the history. And so like, just because they like the idea of four twenty-five, we would still have to have approved that, just, that was a big part of the conversation last month.
It would seem like if they develop a particular lot that would not allow them to do mitigating, that they should have a higher rate if indeed the fees and lieu is applicable to their development. I mean, there might be a particular piece of property that in order to develop it, they have to use, they can't mitigate. Even though I know that, you know, you say they don't have a choice, but they may not have a choice, depending on the piece of property.
Right, I mean, it is true that the town has never accepted fee in lieu in memory of any staff member, but it isn't necessarily, that isn't to say that you can't say the fee in lieu for developments over a certain size is six twenty-five instead of four twenty-five.
I mean, I just noticed that we had a particular developer who was curious enough to bring that up as a public comment. So there might be a reason why the developer is concerned about the, the cost, but I'm just saying, you always go for the worst-case scenario when you're trying to do these kind of, of things, in my opinion. And I just would think that we would want the public to know that, yes, the little guy is going to have a, a break compared to the bigger guy. Because I know that that's been brought up in the town council, or some of the town council members have said, we don't want the big guys to have that advantage of having such a small, I mean, four twenty, four dollars, I mean, you can't even buy a plant for four dollars, I mean, that's a pretty inexpensive price, in my opinion. So if we're going to allow that for the small guy, the, you know, the little individual homeowner, which I'm okay with, if that's what you want to do, I would think in a situation that we could get caught in where a developer really has a huge plan that is going to take away the opportunity to do with, you know, any mitigation, they could off, they could have to do a fees and loop, you know, program.
I like the concept, I absolutely do, I, I.
It's a possibility.
Right, and so, like, if you, you want to incorporate it now, you could, you could put forward a motion with a, a suggested amount, and I can make the modification.
I mean, in Annapolis, they did, you know, this was two years, three years ago, they did, um, ten dollars a square foot for anything over forty thousand square feet. Forty thousand feet is that about, um, that is about an acre, right?
Less than.
Little less than an acre. So if somebody who's doing a big project, uh, should be discouraged for, or should be retaining whatever foliage they can in their project and make sure that, you know, it's a program that they're not going to take advantage of at four dollars a square, uh, a square foot. So I would like to just discuss it quickly, you know, does anybody agree with me on that, or do you think that we should not bother with it? I would, you know, probably go up to, I don't know, maybe double it at eight dollars. And it's really chump change, it's really not a lot of money in the scheme of things when a developer is coming in there and making, you know, and putting a huge development in there.
I agree with the concept.
And it looks as though, you know, Annapolis went, uh, not double, but, you know, they went from six to ten, so if we went from four to eight, I think that would be a reasonable proportion. So does anybody else feel the same, or am I the only one who thinks, look puzzled?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to think of how you would get it in there, because I think you're right, having the two tiers.
You want me to phrase it?
Yes, if he wouldn't.
Yeah, that's the message.
Is forty thousand square feet the number you want to?
Yes, because, that's what Annapolis uses, so I'm, I'm assuming that that's something that a developer would understand.
So how I would suggest you phrase it, right, is shall be four twenty-five for properties under forty thousand square feet and eight dollars for properties over four thousand square feet.
Per square foot.
So it says fees and, right, so at the top of it, it says fees and lieu shall be collected at a rate per square foot.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, yes, of course, you're right.
Do you want me to repeat it, or you have it? Okay, so you would say shall be four twenty-five for properties under forty thousand square feet and eight dollars for properties over forty thousand square feet.
And eight, what, fifty?
I was going to say.
It was proposed eight dollars, so it could be eight fifty, that's, that's for you guys to decide.
Okay, eight fifty, okay.
Phrasing, provided, fill in your own numbers.
Right, right.
Keeping in mind that this was done three years ago in Annapolis, um, as an MOU, and it was six twenty-five and ten dollars. So we're still very, very inexpensive when it comes to comparing ourselves to a larger town. All right, so I would move.
So do you do want to do ten, five and ten?
Uh, increase the four twenty-five?
Yep.
I, I could be, I could be very happy doing that, because when I figured it out, it's still low, four twenty-five is still very low.
I want you to be very happy.
So in other words, you all want to change it.
Happy quicker.
Five and ten is what you want to do?
Yeah.
John is like gearing up for a.
So, I can hear what you have to say, Larry.
That's five dollars a square foot, five dollars.
Yes, a square foot.
Square foot.
A square foot.
Properties under forty thousand.
Because when you look at the costs of administrating and, um, planting and hiring people to plant it and, and then coming, and you've got to take a bond, and then you're going to go back in two years and assess, okay, is it dead or alive? It's a lot of staff time. Five dollars a square foot is not a lot of money in today's market when it comes to, you know, planting and mitigating.
The Starbucks.
There is a Starbucks, there is a limit on how much you can charge for staff time, and so the four twenty-five was based off the four oh five planting with the allowable percentage for staff time, so that's how I got to the four twenty-five. You, you can choose to say, I don't know if that planting number is good, because the, my methodology was, I researched different, you know, ideas of how much it costs per square foot to plant. I calculated, I went and looked at the properties that were for sale in the town of Chesapeake Beach, calculated how much it would cost to acquire property per square foot, added the percentages that were allowable, that's where I got to the four twenty-five. So there is room for flexibility in there if you wanted to go up.
And when I looked at the cost of planting one plant, it starts at fifteen dollars a square foot and up, so I've got those stats in here, too. But I'm, I'm assuming that if I said five and ten, that would include the administrative costs, right? So they would just delineate the percentage out of that for whatever it would be. So I would like to make a motion that we amend.
It's twenty-five?
I was going to go back to the number that it was, and I'm trying to figure out where we start here.
Oh, is it post the five?
What section are we in, we're in section B, general development standards, correct? Is that the, is that the section we're in? So we're in section B, part four, section B.
One, or A? One, right? Or did we get to?
B one.
Is a subsection ten, um, and fees and lieu, okay, fees in lieu of planting. My motion would be to fees and lieu shall be collected at the rate per square foot to required mitigation that cannot be satisfied through planting or offsets shall be five dollars. shall be five dollars for properties under forty thousand square feet and ten dollars for properties over forty thousand square feet.
That's five dollars per square foot.
Five dollars per square foot.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yay.
And the part, I just made some tweaks to part C to make it make, to flow grammatically in relation to the above, so that's probably fine. Part D and E are related to the other requests y'all made, um, related to the fee and Lou program. Ensuring that fee and Lou applications that are asking for fee and Lou, regardless of whether they're category two or card, category one, what category one comes to you, to make sure that they come to you.
Right.
When there's a fee and Lou involved.
So do we need to motion to accept the other changes on this page? Or did we do that already?
Yeah, no, we need to do that.
For C, D, and E, correct?
Yes.
He's grammatical, but if you're making a motion, you can include it.
All right. I make a motion that we accept the language on, that's D. That's four. Ten, Roman numeral ten. Section C, D, and E as indicated.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Brown opposed. All right.
That drives us to. Twenty-seven?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I was gonna, I was trying, twenty-seven?
Yes, that drives us to page twenty-seven. Number two. Roman numeral I.
This is a note more than a change, I just stuck it in there. So, right, we would, we would remove this, this is a point for y'all.
In our.
Well, I, I think you can go forward with this and then the critical area would per, bring you the lit, bring the list that could be incorporated by your commissioners.
I just want to make a note that the original motion that I made included the forest conservation areas in Chesapeake Village. And there are some.
Okay, so, there was a blank there and that might be what was missing, so.
Yes, so I would like to make the motion to take note of the note in part five, section A, two, C, two, but to replace it with the words Chesapeake Village subdivision.
The note would have come out anyway, sorry, I didn't put it in.
Can I have a second?
A second?
Thank you.
A second?
Lulled into one there and another.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None opposed? All right, that pushes us on to page thirty-one. Section E. So E two, E three.
I mean, the requirement of.
Water-dependent facilities as described in this section.
That was a recommendation that they had just to be all encompassing and not leave anything out.
Um, do you want to add an S to requirements, to requirement? Shall I meet all the other requirements?
Sure.
Just make a motion?
Yeah.
I would very much like to second that motion.
All right, with the, with the addition of the plural, plurality of requirements, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I've assumed I'm allowed to make grammatical changes or improvements that are
Pardon me?
Not substantive, as, as I or the commission.
Yes, you can add these. You can add yourself out, Sarah.
Thank you, I did, I did that. No permission. Okay, so page thirty-five.
An assertive manager. I mean planner.
Mayor.
Thirty-five? Right, is that the right number?
Thirty-five, that's right. F three, no, F number four.
That's statutory, that's why it's in all caps, so they're gonna require you to put it in.
Okay, then, motion to include. Do we have a second?
Right here.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just, is it A, A new, is it A new intensely developed? Then it should be area and not areas?
Intensely developed.
Or is it just new intensely developed areas?
Yes, it's.
Okay, so that's on an A in front of it, okay.
Uh, I just removed it.
Okay.
Well, it is an A, but.
It's an A, but.
It's not there anymore.
Areas, okay. I'm sorry, let's, so we're voting and I go yea.
All in favor?
Yea.
All opposed? None? Drive on to page thirty-six.
Also statutory.
Pardon me? Also statutory?
Put it in.
Do I have a motion to, uh, accept three?
The question?
Negative.
It has to, we have to have that in there to have a demonstrable economic benefit, we have to have that in there?
Yeah.
Statutory.
Let's move on.
I mean, okay, I don't have a choice, so I guess, okay, there's that.
Right, motion?
Motion to include?
Second?
Second to include.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah.
Opposed?
I oppose.
Did you oppose?
I oppose.
All right.
Even though I have to have it.
Do you get that, Sharon?
Yeah.
All right, thirty-six was a typographical error that is being corrected. And then at the bottom, we get more statutory.
On page thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven, yeah.
Okay. It also, there's number two on the back page of thirty-eight. So if we accept one, we should accept the, we should make the motion to accept or both of them?
Move to, uh, move to accept, uh, part eight. C, one, and two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Okay. And there you have it.
Thank you for that.
Thirty-eight.
It was.
We did thirty-eight, we did them both together.
We did them both together, okay. See, I don't even know what I wrote it for.
And then did we include that comment about the ten thousand dollar fine, where does that, where does that go?
Right, so the, the violation section, right, it did not draft you a new violation section because we were having this discussion. So what I'm proposing to do is add that comment, if you'll motion, to the current violation section, because you want to get something over. And then you can, again, you got four opportunities to make any amendments you want to. Something's in place and you can tackle those things. So.
Um, I have a question, though. Um, Larry, thank you for pointing it out, that the staff memo says, um, that it replaces section two ninety seventeen and two ninety dash eighteen. Two ninety dash eighteen is growth allocation floating districts, so where is that section going? We, we're not motioning to remove that, are we?
The growth allocation is, uh, it's just incorporated into this, it's, uh, where is it? Just.
Ninety eighteen.
Find it, oh. I feel like it's section like eight, no, that's grandfathering.
Tried to look, but.
Growth allocation floating district starts on.
Found it faster than me.
June ninety dash sixty-three.
Right, I see it in our code, I don't see it in this replacement ordinance.
It is in here.
It is in the, it is in this ordinance.
I know it's in here.
I've seen it a thousand times.
Oh, part seven.
It's not eight, seven, page thirty-four.
Yep.
This is not where, definite, it starts with definition.
Yep.
Thirty-four.
Thank you.
See it at the top, growth allocation, part seven.
Okay. So it looks like this ordinance is losing the protection of a public hearing.
We do have to have a public hearing for the change of fees and Lou, don't we? Franklin, what do you say about that? I think we have an option, but the town council would have to have a public hearing for that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the town.
So.
And you're saying that in the, in two ninety eighteen, there's a public hearing when growth allocation is awarded, and in part seven, there is not.
Um. It says, yeah, because it says town council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed development. Is that what you're referring to on two ninety sixty-five?
Yeah.
Number five?
Yes.
Okay, so if you want to incorporate that, we would put it in D process. And I would say yes, I would just make it five. I don't think it matters what number you make it.
And then, yeah, there's, there's a bunch of.
So why isn't the whole thing dropped in there?
Yeah, that's my question as well.
Is that just a, a grammatical administrative oversight?
Why isn't the, oh, the whole thing, two ninety eighteen?
Yeah, why isn't that, and it's, I mean, your, your comment was, Sarah, that, um, it had been incorporated. Well, clearly, I don't think it's been incorporated in its entirety. So can we include two ninety dash eighteen in its entirety there, or is it not because there was
There were.
Conflict between?
No, it's just that it, um, it is different. So.
They described me as different, what does that mean?
So we're, we're talking about the acreage and the deduction, the, the purpose. And then we get on to, so you don't have these designations, it's like requirements and standards, it's just written a little differently in the new model ordinance, right? So I think the question is if, if it's the public hearing process that you want to include, then we would go to two ninety eighteen. The, two, oh. Two ninety eighteen, C two fi, right, C two.
No, it's C five, right? C, okay, C, yeah, C five.
Right, B two, B five, and incorporate, and in, add that.
I think it's.
Two.
I think it's C five. I don't, I think five is the, I don't think it has to be C two. I think it's C five. Right?
No, the five is different, it's underneath two, like, if you're in two ninety eighteen, the current, C is submission requirements for the GA district classification requests.
Right.
Um, and so there isn't a five, there's not a five. The five you're looking at is underneath two. So there's only, it only goes up to number four. So it's, it's C two five. So the motion would be to add, add.
You don't see that?
Do you see it?
Yeah, I do see it, um, I was just wondering if you wanted to include six too? It sounds like you're about to make the motion.
When you make the motion, if you could say with modified abbreviations and language, right? Because the GA district is not how we refer to it in the new ordinance. So if I can be allowed to just make that grammatical change.
So the motion is that on section C, submission requirements two, we are going to accept five and six from zoning code in two ninety dash eighteen and add with modified abbreviation and language.
Yeah, that lets me make any changes that are consistent with how we're abbreviating or what we're calling things, yes.
That would be the amendment to growth allocation on page thirty-four.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay.
I mean, what is there in this growth allocation that is not in the current code? Why don't we just?
The public hearing was not earmarked in that, in the current.
Well, that's right, it's not in the current, in the current proposed code. Uh, what else is missing? Why do we need to change the current code?
I would support a swap too, if I enter, that's, that's what I would like to understand.
So I think if.
Which code has what?
If, if we're kind of going back and, and evaluating that, I think. we don't want to make a, a rough motion tonight because it, it needs to be looked at side by side because the model ordinance has new references and changes and some of the statutory stuff we just adopted, I think is in this section, so I mean, do, do you want to discuss, I think you guys have to make a decision as to whether you want to push, you know what I mean? Where, where you want to go with this section and.
Well, I, I'm, I'm fine with making the modification as per the motion. I fear going back through both documents again, I just, you know, day seventeen, I, I feel I need to put this forth.
I think that with the public hearing, that's pretty good protection. And it looks like this list here, what page is it on, thirty-six?
Thirty-five. Oh, oh, no, growth allocation, thirty-four.
Thirty-four. It looks like they still need to have a buffer management plan, they have to have a habitat protection plan, other applicable conditions of improvement, or that's some protection, the only thing. There's one more thing in this that seemed like. Oh, something that is in our code, that's not in this code, it says that all of the growth allocation applications will be reviewed once a year annually, so we don't have them trickling in, I thought that was also a good provision, because one person might try to get ahead of the line for growth allocation where another person's growth allocation might be more important or more beneficial, and you might not want both. So I'm trying to find where it says that. In just a minute.
Four, would that be on page two ninety sixty-four?
Yep.
B four?
Yep.
All applications for GA, for growth allocation, district classification, and growth allocation will be reviewed at one time in each calendar year?
Yes, I would like to add that to our section as well.
I'm just trying to look for the best place.
It's two ninety sixty-four.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out where to put it.
Oh.
In the new one. I guess it would go under procedure, right? Procedure.
Sure.
Process.
Process.
Process, which is what we just added the five to, but it might make sense to make that number, oops, to, to add that, either add that to number two or make it number three, because that's where it's talking about that.
Oh, sure.
I just want to put it in the right place, so.
I think it needs to be a separate number and just stand out.
Make it.
We could make it number one.
Or D five.
Well, five, we just made the public hearing. And so two refers to the application shall be refu, the, shall be reviewed, so I would, I would suggest making it two, just because like timeline-wise.
Put that sentence in there.
Yeah, at the front of that, at the front of number two, I would say.
Make it its own number two and renumber everything, or?
No, I think I can go with the.
Okay.
Drop it in, in front of the.
In front of the planning commission shall, or the application for growth, yes. Okay.
Well, Kathleen, do you want me to make it, or do you want to make the?
Oh, sure, I'll make it.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is that we will add on page thirty-four. And we are we are going to add number five and number six from two ninety dash eighteen and on two ninety dash eighteen.
E four.
Number four. So number four will then be incorporated into page thirty-four, D process, item number two. And five and six will be labeled also under process? Yes, okay. Do I have a second?
You got that, Sharon? Okay, Sharon, go with it, I'll second it.
Did that make sense, Sharon?
Yeah, but I thought you already added the five and six.
Yeah, we did add five and six, I was just saying it again to incorporate number four. So you're just a step ahead of us. Oh, we have a second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Does that conclude?
If I can just have a motion to incorporate the existing violations section with the addition of the critical areas recommendation regarding penalties, I think that'll be adequate.
Say that again?
To incorporate the existing violation section with the addition of the critical areas recommended statement regarding penalties, as stated in my memo, maybe? That way you don't have to read the whole thing.
Existing violation section regarding?
Remember we were talking about the violation section and then all this came up and they were like, you should.
Oh, okay.
You're looking at a whole new viol, I didn't, it basically sort of trashed what I was in the middle of.
Okay. The, in addition, motion will be to incorporate the language from the town planner memo, the critical area commission does recommend that the town include the following language. That's the last paragraph on the memo. You see that, Commissioner Clark? Okay, we're gonna incorporate that as, as written?
Yeah.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Say aye. Opposed?
Yea.
Did that motion include incorporating the existing?
It, it just, that motion included incorporating that last paragraph.
So I think we need to incorporate the existing zoning ordinance's penalty section, correct?
If we're not changing it, honestly, you don't need to incorporate it into the ordinance, there's a, you know, they want to, they don't want to go to multiple sections, but we can just send them the multiple sections. So, point, thank you.
So now are we gonna make a motion to accept these changes and then return this document to this DAC?
For official comments, and then it's also you, you can say to the, the board, right, as well. So you can, you can send it to your town council, right, and the critical area commission.
Okay.
So it's in the town council's hands and the comments are coming back to them.
Okay, so I make the recommendation to return this document to the town council as well as the CBCAC as amended. All in favor? All opposed? Commissioner Brown said no. Well. It's still the same. That's what I was just gonna say, it's still the same year of our Lord in twenty twenty-four, so do we have a second for Commissioner Rick Cage's motion? Probably not, but okay, can I stop you is what I offer?
Bring what we already have for tonight, if you can for next time, then we don't have a week to be stuff over again.
Absolutely. Well, the agenda will be revised and we'll make it accordingly, but yes, of course.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh huh, I didn't say no.
Ah, we didn't say no.
Said yes to that one.
Good work, Commission.
We'll see, we'll see what gets approved and what doesn't get approved.
Well, I will say that we have done our part.
I motion, we go get donuts.
It's a complicated. Go get donuts.